Order. The blood and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I did have some. Page thirteen, I still gotta pull mine up there. Just a question on the snow removal there. Did we have an issue with Borca or that's not? If we have a contract with them, something like that's not gonna get us nipped at, is it?
I don't know what that one's for. What do you call it, Kenny, for? Trying to think.
Yeah, I don't know. It just says snow removal on it. And, not that I have an issue, I'm sure they did a great job. I'm just wanting to make sure because we do have a contract with another.
Was it because they were both gone?
I remember seeing Brandon down by the county shed. I just, I can't place what it was for.
Okay. So, yeah, maybe just to check into that, you know. I'm sorry. I forgot that you're not. You know what I mean? Just to see because we do have a contract with somebody else.
Right.
Yeah. But, and like I said, I don't have an issue with it. Just something to look into. And we were on another one. So, page thirteen, the tree service is, it's escaping my memory. Is that one that we?
That's a pass through from the lake.
That's a pass through that we paid for. It didn't cost city anything.
Okay, okay. All right. All righty, that answers that one. And then, that might be all I had on that. Thirteen, I see. Yeah, I think that's all I have.
You've got a lot of notes there.
I do have a lot of notes, actually. Several pages.
Josh, I don't feel well.
Yeah, does that mean she won? Is there any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? If not, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Anyone here for public comment? If not, we'll go right on to the auditor.
All right. I brought you guys hard copies so you have them tonight too. I know you had, I think you got the PDF over the weekend. So, if you came across any questions going through, just stop me or whatever, wherever we're at. But, if you go in, it's about seven.
Can I just wanna ask you a question? Everything that's in here is in here. What, there's like a duplicate info in it, is my question is.
So, okay, the one that says annual financial, that's your audit. That's a single 2021 standalone year, whatever. That's what goes off to like the state or whoever. The other one is, gives you a little bit more information with a little bit of the comparative history and a lot more of the charts and pictures, the graphs, to see the trends.
It's a lot of the same info but a different way.
Yeah. The 2021 numbers are all gonna be the same information from either way. It just, like I said, the audit report is that single year. So, as far as really for useful tool for you guys, when it comes down to it, you know, it's hard to really see where you are in comparison when you're looking at a single year versus the other one gives you some of those comparative histories. Outside of obviously coming out of these COVID years, things become a little less comparable because some of your departments have been affected by the closures and such like that. So, you know, when you look at some of that next to each other, it's a little skewed in your, in your world here because of how, just you had more departments that had more COVID effect, I guess. But otherwise, yes, the numbers are the same. And it more highlights your general fund, the operating fund, just gives a really, you know, and then the enterprise funds. So, if you go into page two on the audit report, it's gonna be the one that's the thicker book. That starts with the independent auditor's report letter. As far as changes for 2021, this letter is where you're gonna see differences. If you look at 2020 audit report, the 2020 audit report letter had a much different layout. We did not start with the opinion. The opinion was more in the middle of the letter. So, now they've moved that opinion up to the top. That's what you're after in an audit. Are your financial statements fairly presented? Now we start off telling you, yes, they are. So, the second paragraph there tells you your financial statements have an unmodified audit opinion or a clean audit opinion. They're fairly presented. The next couple sections, the basis for opinion, you prepare your financial statements in accordance with government auditing standards. That's what that tells you.
Order. The blood allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I did have some. Page thirteen, I still gotta pull mine up there. Just a question on the snow removal there, did we have an issue with Borca? Or that's not, if we have a contract with them, something like that's not gonna get us nipped at, is it?
I don't know what that one's for, what he called Kenny for, trying to think.
Yeah, I don't know, it just says, it just says, "snow removal" on it. And, and, not that I have an issue, I'm sure they did a great job, I'm just wanting to make sure because we do have a contract with another.
Was it because they were both gone?
I remember, I can, I, I remember seeing Brandon down by the county shit, I just, I can't place what it was for.
Okay. So, yeah, maybe just to check into that, you know, I'm sorry, I forgot that you're not, yes, you know what I mean? Just to see, because we do have a contract with somebody else.
Right.
Yeah, so, but, and like I said, I don't have an issue with it, just something to look into. And we were on another one, so page thirteen, the tree service, is I, it's escaping my memory, is that one that we?
That's a pass through from the link.
That's a pass through that we paid for, it didn't cause city anything.
Okay, okay, alright. Alrighty, that answers that one. And then. That might be all I had on that. Thirteen, I see. Yeah, I think that's all I have.
You've got a lot of notes there.
I do have a lot of notes, actually, several pages.
Josh, I don't feel well.
Yeah, does that mean she won? Is there any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? If not, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Anyone here for public comment? If not, we'll go right on to the auditor.
Alright, I brought you guys hard copies, so you have them tonight too. I know you had the, I think you got the PDF over the weekend, so if you came across any questions going through, just stop me or whatever, or wherever we're at, but if you go in, it's about seven.
Can I just wanna ask you a question? Everything that's in here is in here. What, there's like a duplicate info in it, is my question is.
So, okay, the, the, the one that says annual financial, that's your audit. That's a single 2021 standalone year, whatever, that's what goes off to like the state or whoever. The other one is, gives you a little bit more information with a little bit of the comparative history and a lot more of the charts and pictures, the graphs, to see the trends.
It's a lot of the same info, but a different way.
Yeah, the, the 2021 numbers are all gonna be the same information from either way. It just, like I said, the twenty, the audit report is that single year, so as far as really for useful tool for you guys, when it comes down to it, you know, it's hard to really see where you are comparison when you're looking at a single year, versus the other one gives you some of those comparative histories. Outside of obviously coming out of these COVID years, things become a little less comparable because some of your departments have been affected by the closures and such like that. So, you know, when you look at some of that next to each other, it's a little skewed in your, in your world here because of how, just you had more departments that had more COVID effect, I guess. But otherwise, yes, the, the numbers are the same. And it more highlights your general fund, the operating fund, just gives a really, you know, and then the enterprise funds, so. So, if you go into page two on the audit report, it's gonna be the one that's the thicker book. That starts with the independent auditor's report letter. As far as changes for 2021, this letter is where you're gonna see differences. If you look at 2020 audit report, the 2020 audit report letter had a much different layout. We did not start with the opinion, the opinion was more in the middle of the letter. So now they've moved that opinion up to the top. That's what you're after in an audit, are your financial statements fairly presented? Now we start off telling you, yes, they are. So the second paragraph there tells you, your financial statements have an unmodified audit opinion or a clean audit opinion, they're fairly presented. The next couple sections, the basis for opinion, you provide, you prepare your financial statements in accordance with government auditing standards, that's what that tells you. The next one gives you the responsibility of management, you're responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. The city should, does take responsibility for the financial statements. And then on page three, it gives the auditor's responsibility, and our responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statements based on the audit. Again, far as layout format different, this section, auditor's responsibility, is gonna look a little different than it did last year. Basically, the wording is the same, it's just really more of a double emphasis on some of the points within there. And then the last couple pages, just kinda define some of the sections within the audit and, and the level of opinion that we're giving on, on those sections. Starting on page six starts with what we call.
Can I have you stop on page three?
Yep.
I was reading through this whole thing for three hours. Down at the bottom, one of the bullet points where you conclude whether in our judgment there are conditions or events that blah, blah, blah. Silver Lake's ability to continue is an ongoing concern for a reasonable period of time, what does that all mean?
So basically, as part of the audit process is we have to determine, or you have to essentially truly determine, and we have to verify that the likelihood, and, and a lot of this comes into play as, you know, the audit standards are in existence for all entities, and then we have kind of this like piggyback off giving us some government auditing standards. So bear in mind, this, this comes more into play with really public entities, the going concern piece. But that basically says is, you know, your financial condition at the date of the audit, which is today, that I don't feel that there's lack of you continuing for at least one year. That the city of Silver Lake is in a financial position to continue to, you know, collect funds and pay their debts for the next 12 months from, from today, is kind of what that's telling you. If your finances were in a different, you know, world and you, you know, we didn't think you would be able to continue to pay the debts and/or the residents weren't gonna continue to be able to pay their tax payments and such, then we would have to disclaim that within there. So that's kind of what that tells you, is that, you know, our professional judgment verifies that you do not feel that there's a going concern issue.
Okay.
And I, and I just want to just, just clear that up in case anybody thinks you, you just meant that we could go for another 12 months and it's just until the next audit, basically.
So what this tells us is that, like, your finance, finances are in a positive format, that you will still exist in 12 months from today. You'll go, kind of, in, in the government world, this one's a little bit harder because obviously your finances are derived by, by taxes and such. But if you kind of back your mind into a private world, you know, if I was looking at a business's financials and, you know, or their industry is something that I don't think will exist in 12 months, then we would have to note that in the audit. So that's kind of what that piece is telling you. We've always had to do a going concern assessment, it just never existed in the report letter unless there was an issue. Now we have to stay, state it whether there is or is not. So a lot of this stuff really, in our standards, we used to be able to, if, if there was nothing to be said, we didn't have to say anything. And now we almost have to state everything within, because if it's not stated, someone could question whether it existed or not.
So I might be jumping the gun here, but one, one thing I noticed in there that I was, I was pleased about was that with your assessments, that, and, and the reason why I'm pleased is because we've had so much change in our office, is that in your report, you said that you, you found no concerns with how they're preparing things and doing things. And I think that's great because we've had so much change over the last couple of years in our office and they've been able to keep up, and I think that's really good.
Well, and I know, I, I had a brief conversation last week with the mayor, and one of the things I think that really saved the city in this respect, because I've seen that in other cities we audit where they've had turnover and all of a sudden, you know, stuff went wrong, is, is really you still had that one constant person that was still there. So although everything wasn't known before, you know, in her world, she knew enough to keep things flowing and were able to kind of keep going, so I think that really kind of saved you by having that second person and it wasn't a total turnover. Same thing in the liquor side, you know, obviously she knows enough about the liquor side of things that with that manager changing, because having both positions changed really could have been a negative for the city if you didn't have that, you know, constant person, so.
And to give some credit to the people before doing a good job helping, bringing them along too, I think John did a very good job.
Absolutely.
To have things in order, weren't walking into something that was, yeah, yep, yep. But then, starting on page six gives the management's discussion and analysis. It's gonna give you that narrative overview on the financial statements. If you skip ahead through all of the, the narrative, isn't my strong suit. Page fifteen, page fifteen starts with what we call the government-wide financial statements. So fifteen and sixteen show the city as a whole, it shows the city taking into account all your long-term assets and liabilities, so similar to how we'd see private industry financial statements. The governmental activities, which would be your general fund, your debt service fund, special revenue funds, capital project funds, had total assets of $3,133,000. That deferred in, or deferred outflow related to pensions has to do with the paranet pension liability, that was $112,000. Total liabilities were $769,000, and then the deferred inflow related to the pensions was $343,000. The total net position, that's so to speak, the total net worth of those funds, it was $2133,000. Of that, $965,000 is what's invested in capital assets, less what you owe on those assets. So it's things like your buildings, your equipment, your roads, your infrastructure. So those are not necessarily expendable resource. That unrestricted net position, that's what does the city have available to use the, to, to meet those ongoing obligations of the city? The $978,000. The business type activities would be the water, sewer, liquor. The total assets were $3,654,000, the liabilities $120,000. And then that total net position of $3,517,000. Again, about just over $2 million of that is in that infrastructure piece or the capital assets, and 1.4 million is in the unrestricted. Page fif- or sixteen, sorry, gives you the statement of activities. The statement of activities is a unique statement to governments, it's kind of a version of an income statement. We start with expenses and move our way over to revenues. That third line from the bottom there gives that change in that position, that's the profit or loss or increase or decrease in the funds. So the governmental's had an increase of $237,000. The business type activities had an increase of $216,000, or total increase to the city of about $453,000. Page seventeen gives the balance sheet for the governmental funds. So again, the general fund, the ambulance fund are your major funds, and then the non-major governmental funds. The general fund had assets of $728,000, liabilities of $36,000. That deferred inflows related to unavailable revenues, that is the property taxes that have been assessed on homeowners that have not yet paid at the end of the year, that first 60 days outside.
Which one was that?
The $6,000, the. And then the total fund balance is $686,000. Of that, $615,000 is that unassigned fund balance, that is your working capital or what do you have left in the general fund to continue into the next year. That number we wanna see, the state's target range is 35% to 50%, a lot of small cities, probably that 50% to 75% is a much better range. I wanna say you were about that 80, 90% it is later in the report.
I thought it was 65 when I read it.
Maybe.
Yeah, it was, it was in the 60s, mid 60s.
Was it? Okay. I've seen a few others since I've worked on yours now, so.
68, maybe, or 68, something.
Page thirty-six, 83.2% of 2021, or 2022 budget on page thirty-six. In the other reported, probably references and related to the current year.
Right.
Yeah, it said that you should be between 30% and 50%, and we were in the 60s. That's, I think that's the one you're referencing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. And like I say too, the, the state's target range is what they say for all cities, so the smaller you are and the more reliant you are on LGA and tax money, the higher that number really should be, or 50, 50% is probably that bare bone minimum. So at 60-some percent, you are by no means like over in there. The ambulance fund has total fund balance of $238,000, and then your non-major governmental's have total fund balance of $576,000. Page eighteen gives the reconciliation between those two balance sheets. So the government-wide statement where accounted for all those long-term assets and liabilities and kind of how we get back to that fund, financial statement we just saw. So that one was what we call in a near term, anything that happened in the year or the first 60 days outside of the year. Page nineteen gives the changes in, a statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance or an income statement. So the general fund had revenues of $951,000, expenditures of $648,000, for a total increase of $154,000. The ambulance had an increase of about $34,792, and then the non-majors had an increase of $33,000. So the governmental side, the increase in total was $222,000. Page twenty gives the reconciliation between that statement of activities and then the statement we just saw, again, taking that, so to speak, income statement effect on those long-term assets and liabilities. Twenty-one gives the balance sheet for the enterprise funds or your proprietary funds.
Could I just, we're in no rush here.
Oh.
In case anybody's got questions, you gotta give them a chance to ask a question.
Yeah, just stop me. The, the enterprise funds, the water, sewer, storm and liquor funds. So the water fund has assets of $620,000, sorry, those are current assets. The total assets of $1,031,000, liabilities of about $25,000, for total net position of $1,500,000. Again, most of that net position, or about half of that, is what's invested in those long-term assets, the, the capital assets. The sewer fund has assets of $1,714,000, small amount of liabilities, about $4,000. So that total net position is 1.7 million, of which about $1 million is invested in those capital assets. And then the storm sewer fund has assets of $571,000 with no liabilities. And then the liquor has assets of $337,000, liabilities about $90,000, for total net position of $232,000. Page twenty-two gives the income statement for those four funds. As far as in the state's eyes, did you guys self-sustain or not? They go to that line that says income before transfers. So the water fund had $123,000 profit, the sewer had $137,000, the storm sewer about $2,800, and then the liquor $35,000.
Just wanted a quick touch on that one. Storm sewer fund is not operating at a deficit now. That's something we've been keeping an eye on for a while, it is not operating at a deficit, so that's.
I did, I never thought we were.
Yeah, it's been operating at a, at a deficit since it started. It's come up as a deficit every time until this year that I know of.
Yeah, and I think, um.
At least since I've been here.
The, the storm sewer is probably more so due to the depreciation piece on there. But yeah, I do believe that, that was a deficit. The change in net position is the total increase or decrease after the transfers. Again, when the, both of them are positives in your, in your eyes here this year, but really the states after the line before transfers. So you could have transfers that bring you to a deficit and they still say you self-sustain. But the water had an increase of $55,544, sewer $132,000, and then the liquor had a $10,000 transfer, so still was $25,000 to the positive.
But like, when you're getting back to what you said, the storm sewer fund, that's taken in depreciation and everything, right?
Exactly.
That's not cash on hand, that's depreciation.
Right, right. The next statement on page twenty-three gives the cash flow statement.
Right.
And both of you, both of your.
Now I'll take a look at it.
Methods are both positive, which you really wanna see. But, you know, sometimes you're gonna have a deficit in one statement or the other. But, but the cash, the water fund had an increase of $101,000, sewer increased of $186, towards, towards the bottom there. Storm sewer had a $20,000 increase, and then the liquor had a $25,903 increase. So your enterprise, yeah, your enterprise funds had a $333,552 increase. And then twenty-four just gives that reconciliation on the cash flow. And then if you skip back a ways, page thirty-six, I know we already briefly touched this, but the, the fund balance policy, so the, in relation to your unassigned fund balance in relation to 2022 budget, it was 83.2%. That said, usually your budgets are, you guys seem to kind of almost, I don't know, buffer your budget a little bit so you don't fall short. So that's probably where in that other statement, we're getting a little bit lower number. That and, and the, and the other report where it was closer to that 60%. Because of some of the COVID money, expenditures and revenues were higher in 2020 and 2021 than, than normal and there than your budget. So I would kind of go somewhere in between there for really what your reserves were, because your budget's probably a little bit low compared to what the last couple of years have been, and then those years were a little bit high because of the COVID dollars. And then if you go back a ways, continuing on with the budget, on page forty-seven, it starts with the budget comparison. So it shows the general fund, I believe your ambulance and fire are in there also, yeah. On page forty-seven, the revenue side on the general fund budget, you had revenues of $871,706, actual was $951, so about, just shy of $80,000 over budget there on the revenues. On page forty-eight, expenditures, the budget for general government was $167,000, actual was about $153,000, about $14,000 under budget there. Page forty-nine, the public safety budget was $191,000, actual was $166,000. Yep.
So in here shows, you know, I'm gonna go back to forty-seven.
Yep.
Where it was eighty-nine over, but forty-some thousand of that is the latest thing from the, that's in before the end of the year, wasn't it?
So when you look at like what, where your overages come, it was, 20,000 of it was that small city street aid, which cities received in 2019, or 2018 and prior, nineteen and twenty, you didn't receive it. So obviously it wasn't budgeted. I don't think it was even said that you were gonna get the money until about days before it came out. And then the other big one that's kind of the overage you're creating it is that donation line. Obviously, you're not gonna budget high on donations when you don't know what's gonna come in. So yes, it's 80,000 over budget, but just those couple pieces amount to about 60,000 of that overage.
Right.
And again, then in relation to that, you know, if you see some overages on the expenditure side, it would, it would make sense. So page forty-nine, your, uh, public safety was under budget, public works was under, under budget by $38,000. And then culture and rec on page fifty was under budget by $79,000. Sanitation was under budget by $42,000. So your expenditure side, you had a budget of $737, actual was $648, you were about that 90,000 under budget there. And then on page fifty-one, there was some transfers that were budgeted, $129,000. Actual you did was $162, you had a little bit extra money to make some transfers. So you budgeted have about a $9,000 increase, actual was $158, so $145 to the positive swing there. On page fifty-two gives the ambulance fund budget. Their revenues, the budget was $161, actual was $230. They had budgeted for expenditures $181, actual was $217. So they budgeted for a $1,900 profit, actual was $34,000, about $32,000 to the positive there. And then fire fund on page fifty-three, budget was $62,784 on the revenues, actual was $81,000. The expenditure side, $9,000, $99,000 for, for the budget, actual was $109, about $10,000 over. Again, when you look at the additional revenue, it makes sense to have the over on the, on the expenditure side. And then.
I wanna go back to the, excuse me, apologize for that. I wanna go back to the, to page fifty-two. Did we transfer in $22,000 to the ambulance?
So that's considered like what the city's contribution is for the, for the fund?
But on 2020, that 10,000 was a transfer.
Yeah, oh, so that is, I'm trying to think in my head now. That is, in your ambulance fund, you have the, what's it called? The ambulance training and equipment fund within there. And so that, that is money I think you're putting into that equipment. And so that, that is money I think you're putting into that equipment fund, but it's all shown under this one ambulance fund. So the, the fire equipment piece where you guys are setting money aside for the fire and the ambulance equipment piece where you're setting money aside for the ambulance are shown under the ambulance or the fire funds.
So like our capital improvements?
Right, where you're setting the cash aside, right.
But then why wouldn't twenty have showed more than the ten thousand transfer?
I believe that's all that was done that year. I don't know if you did, did you do extra? Do you remember?
She wasn't there.
Or no, in the twenty-one?
Right, but I'm just getting at is the, the ten thousand transfer in twenty. That jumps right out at me, because that's one of the year-end transfers. That's where my confusion that I made a point in there was, why is there such a difference between the twenty-two thousand and the ten? I mean, there must have been, that one, that one's confusing to me.
And why it was more?
That much more, more than double.
So is it, does anybody remember, is it basically the ten thousand transfer every year?
Yeah, if you look at our transfers, yeah.
My, my memory is going, that there's two funds under ambulance. There's one that's like training, and then there's one that's equipment, right? And then there's another. But I feel like there's three under ambulance. There's the operating, and then there's two as these like savings.
The ones that have like four thousand dollars?
Yeah, yep. Okay.
So the ten thousand would be the operating, and then the other ones were probably capital improvement ones that were kinda lumped together?
I'm thinking, yeah, that some capital ones were done. And I can give you a specific answer on that when I look back at the file. I can go pull it in my, on my computer, but. But that's kind of my gut, is I know there's like two pieces underneath there.
You're on fifty-three or fifty-four when I interrupted you?
Yeah, so I think fifty-three, we kinda went through that. Page fifty-four starts with some pension-related schedules that we have to show. So unless you had any questions on those numbers. Just getting my bearings where I'm at. So you guys disbanded your police department in 2020. So the, if you look at your 2020 audit, there would be schedules related to police and fire para, because you would have had full-time employees on police and fire still in that June thirtieth, 2020 year that the state reports on. And now, since those employees are gone and the department is gone, those schedules are, are gone away. We don't have to account for that police and fire para liability. So that, that would be kind of a change you'd see. And then if you skip back, on pages fifty-six and fifty-seven have to do with the fire side of the para. They have their money in the volunteer firefighters association piece with para. On page sixty-one and sixty-two, it shows your non-major governmental funds individually. So the American Rescue Plan funds are shown as restricted. The fire, you have a two hundred and forty-one thousand, two seventy-one of committed fund balance. You have the 2013 A debt service fund, which is restricted, a hundred and forty-five thousand. And then capital improvement fund of a hundred and seventy-one thousand, that is those other reserves where you're setting money aside for future purchases. And then infrastructure improvement of a deficit of twenty-seven thousand four oh seven, and I believe that's where you're at the beginning stages of a project. And page sixty-two shows the income statement related to those funds. The excess revenues and other sources over expenditures and other uses is the profit or loss or increase or decrease in the funds. So the fire fund is kind of the, more so operating one within there, that had an increase of fourteen thousand one sixteen. Your capital improvement fund had a decrease of sixteen thousand two twenty-six, so spent a little more than, than what you put away for future. And then if you go back on page sixty-four, sixty-four gives you the report on internal control. So we don't actually audit your internal control system, but we take an evaluation of it, and anything that comes up as a finding has to be noted. And so there's two findings in here related to internal control. And those are gonna be listed as significant deficiencies, so kind of a middle-of-the-road audit finding. And they're gonna be detailed on page sixty-six. The first one is the, the fact that the city does not prepare the financial statements. And then the second one is the lack of separation within the accounting piece. You know, ideal world, you'd have a staff of six to eight people doing what Diane and Carissa are doing in the office. So to have all of those various separations, you have a lot better than a lot of cities with, with the two people and some separation. And then the last page within there, page sixty-seven, gives the Minnesota legal compliance letter, and there were no findings in relation to Minnesota legal compliance.
So parts that I've been familiar with from years past, they'd, they'd always give, I normally would hear different things. So I guess my question, you, when you did, I'll just use an example, when you did the audit of the liquor store with the inventory, you're saying, I don't see anything here, so you're saying it was right on?
Well, no. There, so the, basically, if there were major things that weren't resolved, we would highlight them to you.
I don't expect it to be exact, but nothing major.
No, so the, the issue with the liquor store had to do a little bit more, I think, with the software and new manager. So some of the pricing was put in at, say, a case pricing instead of a bottle. So as we were going through, I'm like, wait, this looks really off. It's not, you know, a hundred and eighty dollars a bottle. And so we were able to kind of resolve that, and Carissa was able to take that and, and get it to where it needed to be with, with the right dollars or whatever. That was the biggest thing that came up over there that hasn't really come up in the past. And it was more of, like I said, a pricing issue or not realizing how this particular item was set up in the system. So the wrong piece was put in as, as the price item. On the, the city's side, really, everything was pretty much in line to what it had been in the past. There was no major issues there.
And I'll get into it later, but I think we might still be having a software issue. I think, did you guys see the report for this month? I didn't have it when I had my meeting with him, but we went back over it now, and it doesn't feel like something's right there. So we'll discuss it later, but.
Yeah, I wanna say it was like to the tune of about twenty thousand dollars higher on the initial report than when Carissa rekind of balanced it. So if they're adjusting it on a monthly basis to what's pulling out of the software, and then it's not been fixed within, your inventory's probably a little overstated on a, on a monthly basis.
Yeah, because there was a significant loss this month, and based on what he felt like he pulled in, he just doesn't, feels like something's wrong there. So we're gonna discuss it further this week, but this, this month was kind of a surprise to him, so.
But is, I guess my question on something like that is that the, I'm not saying that software doesn't need to be updated, I'm not saying that at all. But it's really how you manage the software.
Right.
A person enters.
Exactly.
If you don't enter the correct things, the software's not gonna work.
And some of those softwares, like, it probably goes back to a setup issue long, long ago. Where some things were set up as a bottle and some things were set up as a case, and it's, it's not grabbing that right piece at the right time. And unfortunately, I mean, the idea would be, the ideal would be is you always use the same, but some of your products come different variations. And like I said, I think it just, it really jumped out at me when I was doing the inventory, because I'm like, wait, some of these models are way big. And, and so then we kind of took a little bit of a fine-tooth comb, and I was able to be like, no, I could tell these are the ones that, that are, are wrong. And it was probably about thirty-ish items, I would say, that were put in with the wrong pricing. And once that got changed, then it was much different.
So in turn, that's taken the monthly reports off.
Well, and really, what could happen is now, I just gave them end-of-year adjustments, so they haven't put that into this. So if they finally fix it in the software, and now your inventory value is lower because of that, some of, it's, it's taking it all into effect now in this month, where some of it probably really was fixed into 2021. So maybe once, once they get those in and relook at that, it might kind of work its way out.
I hope so, because I didn't like the report this month.
So are you saying that, that it could be showing, how should I say it? It could be making up for deficiencies in other places you're seeing a negative result now?
So twenty, 2021, when, when reports are done, or it's, it's kind of accounted for throughout the year because of that price issue, the inventory was initially overstated, which would have increased your profit.
Exactly.
And, and so then we've, we've since corrected that back down to what it should be. But those numbers are part of the adjustments that Diane had, well, I just gave her, so obviously they're not in the system. And if, if they fix the pricing in the software, and now they're getting a lower value report, if they adjusted that inventory out, it could be related to that, because now all of a sudden, they're picking that all up in one year, where it really was picked up in 2021.
That makes sense, because most of it showed up in the sale of goods and off-sale. So, which, and, and a lot of it was in the NA off-sale, which doesn't make sense, because you're not making a bunch of sales there either. So it's in the report, but yeah, I guess that does make sense then.
So I would almost, after she gets the adjust, you know, take, don't take too much faith of that number yet until you get the adjustments in there, and then reevaluate it after they kind of look at that, because they might have to readjust that number back up because of, it was adjusted for last year. So, and I think Carissa probably still has the report on which particular items, otherwise I do too, on like which of the items had the pricing issue. So if that's something that doesn't fix out, we can kind of take a look further into that with, with where things are at this year, to see if it's still affecting you. But, but that's kind of my gut, because I know he, he got a report on that, and he was gonna work on getting some of those pricing fixed.
Yeah, something I wanna get pinned down sooner rather than later.
Right, so yeah, I would take a look at that after the 2021 adjustments get back in there, and then rebalance the inventory at that period, and then if that doesn't fix it, then holler, because we'll take a closer look to see if those items have, if that's part of it. Any other questions?
Because I read this thing for.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the community, you have good reserves, you have, you know, capital reserves, so you have project money out there. You don't have high level, high levels of debt. Your general fund is strong where you wanna see it. You know, when I say strong, I don't think it's too strong. You know, you can have a community that's too rich, so to speak. I don't think you're at that point. I think you're really where you want to be. You have some reserves out there. When a city looks at replacing things, obviously they're high-dollar things, so you need higher reserves. You know, all of your funds are operating to a positive, so that's unheard of, especially with the enterprise funds. The liquor stores, I think we only have about seven cities of about fifty left with liquor stores. And I think I've only seen three of them so far that I can think of. And all of them seem to have kind of bounced back from that negative COVID effect. Those, like, 2020 seemed to be stronger, 2021 seems to kind of go back to more of that normal. So your profit kind of made sense there.
Okay. You answered my questions.
Okay.
That's impressive. I don't know how you sleep at night.
There are days, you know. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
After you look at them a while, they come, become second nature. All right, let's move on here. Public Works liaison report. When did you meet?
We did not. I was gonna come early and, but we did not meet.
Okay. Once you come up, Dale, in case you've got something to chime in, if you'd like.
Oh, Hillmore, what that was from Borka?
And I can read. Well, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and read the report, and then, so, yeah. Public Works is gathering quotes for jetting and cleaning of designated sanitary mains. Streets and parking lots have been completely swept, and maintenance sweeping will continue as needed. Pool cleaning and filling to start soon, weather permitting. Tile and decking repairs look good after the winter season. Speaking with People Services about hydrant flushing scheduled for early May. Gathering options on street patching. And at the time this report was being prepared, water main repairs were taking place at Cleveland and East Avenue. It is presumed that the acidic soils have eaten away joint bolts, which has been a problem in this area. We're requesting pricing on MLS, I know what that is. What is that?
Liquor store.
Okay. On, on the roof repair and exterior painting. Contacted KLM on paint repair of tower. They have contacted the painter and will schedule Silver Lake for work weather pending. Talking with Scott Kreese, the KLM rep that was on the council, it was at the council meeting, to prepare a letter on what is going to be done on the tower. And the city will review and deem it acceptable. It was suggested that he attend a council meeting prior to the work being started. And I just wanna clear that up, is that for Scott Kreese to appear, or that painter? And is it the same painter?
Yeah. All right.
Because I told him, I said, we wanna know exactly what you're gonna do before you start it. After he comes in here and does something, gone, he's gone, and we don't see his tail light.
Just like he did last time.
Yeah. So I suggested he come to a council meeting.
It's the same guy.
It is the same guy? I suppose that's their guy.
I have a couple of quick things. Page nineteen, I have my notes. I have a smarmy little comment here, because I'm still fuming over the pool. So I know the cracks didn't go away over the wintertime. So it says that they're looking good, but I just don't believe that it can be, and I haven't been down there. But I, I still feel like that they should be held accountable. I don't think we should just turn away from it. I think that, I mean, you put in concrete that cracks, and you put in concrete that don't crack, what was done differently is stuff that doesn't crack. And you see plenty of places that have concrete around their pools that isn't cracked. I just, I still feel like they need to be held accountable. I don't.
And like I did, Josh, last fall, when you brought this up, I pulled Knife River in.
Would you swing that mic around?
I pulled Knife River in, their rep, which was, they didn't get the cement from them either. But he looked at it, and he goes, that's gonna happen, so.
But why does it happen? Because what I was told is it's from pouring it too wet, and I was told that by several people that pour concrete.
And I was told by Knife River that it was done correctly, so.
So what do you suggest, Josh? What is it, you're looking for?
They need to replace the stuff. I think that the city taxpayers paid for the stuff, and they should get something good for what they paid. I think they should come and replace it. I'm, I'm firmly stuck to that, and I don't, I don't believe anything other than that. And, and no matter how many people I ask, every one of them said, well, yeah, if you pour, if you pour it wet, it's easier to work with, but then it's also gonna crack when it dries, so.
But I guess I personally, I'll raise my hand, I haven't looked at it. I mean, are we talking hairline?
Hairline cracks.
Like spider cracks?
Yeah, yeah, they're not quarter-inch or eighth-inch cracks.
Surface cream cracks.
Is that just something that could be?
I haven't been in there, but standing from the outside, I can see them from thirty feet away, so.
Well, then they're not, they're not spider cracks if you can see them thirty feet away.
I guess I beg to differ, you know.
Well, I mean, I took the pictures from outside the fence.
Yeah, yeah, they put that sealer on there, and everything looks, you know.
When did they put the sealer on?
Last fall, right after.
After he took the pictures, or before?
It would have been after. There was no sealer on it before.
Probably after closing September.
So maybe we oughta take another look.
Well, did they, did they put the, they put the sealer on out of their own expense? They fixed it?
Yep.
They sealed them up? I, I'm sorry, I'm just fighting for the taxpayers. I just don't think that they should pay for, we should, well, I mean, we spent their money. We spent their money, and I felt like they should get a good product for it. And, and it's like I said, I can see them from standing outside the pool, because I never went inside, so.
I'd be willing to come in some evening. The council would like to just meet there at six-thirty some evening.
Well, we can all come as a quorum.
Oh, I'll be there at six-thirty, you come every ten minutes, and whoever wants to come and take a look at it.
When do you wanna look at it, Dale?
Whenever you guys tell me, I'll be there.
When are you gonna be there?
Tuesday, Wednesday, seeing what the weather's like.
Tomorrow night's Tuesday.
Yeah, we're going Saint Cloud tomorrow, so.
So you can't do it Tuesday?
No.
I think Wednesday, it's supposed to be raining quite a bit.
Yeah, Thursday.
I'll be there, you tell me when.
We should be back, tomorrow night, we should be back by six-thirty.
Okay, I'll be there.
Okay. I will try to be there right around the same time, because, because if I go in there, it looks good, I'll shut up. But, but we spent their money. I wanna make sure to get something good for their money. And I don't think we should just, always just take it, because we're a small town.
No, yeah, we'll be home.
Okay.
When I get back, I'll get there also.
No, he won't, he's gone too.
I guess the only question I had on here, Dale, um, and I had a couple of people ask me, when was the last time you swept the streets?
Two weeks ago.
There's a lot of leaves out there.
Yep, after all the ice and stuff came off.
Frank, I think probably 60% of them were coming out of the park.
Probably with the wind. Yep, 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 yep. When the final ice came off in the gutters that I go and sweep, that's when this other stuff.
Okay, great.
And then just one other quick one on the report. So as far as the, the leak, it says roof repair and exterior. Just make sure you guys keep Owen in the loop on that one because I asked him about it today and he had no clue about it.
He, I talked to him today about it and he goes, oh, yes. Okay, you know.
Where's it leaking?
It isn't leaking, but remember when Schweiger came in and did that inspection of all the, uh, roofs in town? That was one of the suggestions. They have somebody look at the screws because they're really rusting.
And you had Forcher up there too.
Yeah, we had a company from Hutchinson give us a quote, so we're going to go a little bit farther into that. And then like we discussed, if you're going to do the, uh, roof, maybe we should look at painting the exterior tint.
I think we had talked about that, but here's, here's what I'd like to see you get. If you're going to get a quote on painting it, get a, get a quote on so they know that they could be possibly changing the color.
Oh, yes.
Then city can decide what color. I don't want to, all of a sudden you come by and it's the same color and it's from the, from the sixties, you know.
Today I discussed with Owen and he said we should pick a color that weather better or.
Well, you know, so when you get a quote, you gotta, they gotta judge, tell them color change.
Yep, color change. Yep, because there's a different painting, you know, if you're existing and going with a different color.
Right. Okay.
Get the, get the spec on the paint.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Because there's a lot of difference in that.
Well, a good painter should know it.
Well, we had a little trouble with some painting here last year, so I'm just want to touch bases on paint.
Okay. So you're, you're talking with, uh, so are you going to, I know we had talked about this after a little episode, the last one. Are you guys going to, uh, do the jetting? You and the city, Public Works, not, not, uh, People Services, right? You're going to contract for it?
We're going to contract for it.
Right.
Yep.
Taking your, taking control of that.
Yep, I'm getting the bids and deciding which ones I want to do. I'm working with Jordan.
And that's the camera work as well too, right? Camerating so much.
We did so much camering in 2020 that I think he's pretty much satisfied that we got everything camera that we need to camera. So what we'll do is come in right now and do a jetting and a cleaning. And if they find any bad spots, then we'll have somebody come in.
And I'm trying to remember a couple of years back, but was that the same as where with the, was it with the jetting with the camera? You and I had talked before, you have to do so much, like 20% of the town every year.
Every, yep.
And that's with the cammering.
Yep. Yep, this would be the second year actually because we did a whole bunch. Actually, the northern Frank Street, Oliver Park, all those areas were done in 2020. We started in, uh, June of 2020 and ended in August, three different sessions.
So how much are we still low the water tower company?
Paid him half, didn't we?
Twenty grand, nineteen something. I believe the whole bid was 39 and some change.
Yeah, I think we paid him 50% or something.
Okay. Anything else, Andy, on that?
Uh, no.
Okay. Good deal?
I'm good.
All right, and we'll move on to public safety.
We started with fire. Uh, so the fire had six medicals in City of Silver Lake for the month of March. Other calls in their service area. On May 21, Fire Department will sponsor fundraiser with a, with the liquor store for a car and bike show. We have some council action and they're working with the ambulance on scheduling three EMRs who have signed up to do shifts. So jump, any questions on that? We'll jump right to the council action. They would like to close Main Street, County Route 92 between Lake and Thomas, along with closing the entrances to the muni from 12 noon to 7 PM. And for the bike show. I will make a motion to grant that request.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Any other discussion? Does Main Street have to be approved with the county?
Yes, and I got the permit in already.
Okay. Nothing else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, probably one thing we should let you guys know about and get your blessings. Um, April 21st, myself and my two assistant chiefs are going to be attending the Lions meeting. The mayor and liaison public safety are at the township meetings. I talked about that project to them about using some of the APR money. Lions have reached out and said they'd like to talk to us about that project too. So we're going to take some.
Why don't you tell them what the project is? They, they weren't there.
Replacing our SCBA self-contained breeding apparatus, the air tanks, the face pieces. So they're looking at probably a 70 to a hundred thousand dollar project. So. I approached the Lions a while back and they said they'd like to have us come to a meeting and give them a little bit of information and probably an air pack demonstration. And so myself and the two assistants are going to go there the 21st. I'm not sure when we're on the schedule. Yeah. Sarah never got back to me.
Being a member, it's probably a good one for me to attend.
Yeah. Oh, you're on, yeah, yeah.
I'm a land, yeah.
Is that all right with the council? Then we go ahead and.
Any money you can raise, I think.
That's what we thought. I just thought you should be aware of it.
Uh, one thing, being it's Public Works, um, I think you should either look at, you know, you're going to close the parking lot here? I think you should either look at somehow, uh, either don't make it a one way or get rid of it because everybody's coming in that liquor store parking lot the wrong way. From workers right on down, either we should either enforce it or get rid of it one way, one or the other.
Oh, at the back there the one way? I go through it the right way.
Well, I'm just saying, is it, somebody's going to get schmucked or, you know, I mean, it's something, just think about it.
Yeah. Now, the reason we went to it was because of coming onto Main Street. They claimed they couldn't see.
Can you, yeah, I was going to say, can you get rid of it because it's that blind approach the other way?
It's always was like that for many years.
It's not even a street, it's city property.
Yeah.
He just like coming out of your driveway.
So if somebody comes out of there the wrong way, the one gets hit from the city parking lot?
They would be able to be issued a citation.
If you leave it up there as the one way. If you take it down, then it's, would it be on the, on the city?
It's no different than coming out of the one right across by the bank. It's just as blind coming, coming out of that one. What I'm saying is, is do we have a good enough sign one wrong way going in?
Yeah, yeah, we do. You can see it.
What happened to the pole that was there?
That got, uh, snow removal that got balled.
I, I didn't know. I just, it was going, it was nice and low.
Maybe you should, uh, get a nice clean one or something there because obviously they're not going by it. Okay?
Okay. Sheriff's report. See the tolls there, 82 and you know how that works? That main one is, oh, it looks like they're getting out working pretty much right on the head.
So one thing I did notice in that is the, it's usually right around the mid seventies, but it's up to 82. And I noticed I see a lot more school resource, public relations, which is something Bruce was bringing up.
They, they have been going there and, and talking with the school.
More and stepping in and showing their presence a little more. I talked to with Aaron that two weeks ago, he touched on, he said his, his guys are getting in there more. And stopping in there more, making their presence known more.
Yep, that's good. They addressed it. I think shortly after he brought it up then.
And he's been gone. He's out of town, so I haven't talked to him this week. And that's why the next thing, I mean, we can discuss that, but.
But I'll, I'll be really honest. When I look at this, I have to chuckle to myself. Consistently 7.17 hours. Come on.
Maybe they have a little timer in there. Let's go.
It seems a little different, doesn't it?
I think that's all entered into their little machine.
Then they must, 7.17 must mean they, they get it exactly at say 7:09.
They probably leave, they probably go, okay, I'm leaving here at this time every day.
Because it takes me this long to get where he's going.
You know, maybe he has, they have a little route they do. I don't know. I'm not going to ask them. It's.
Right.
That's kind of intru- I'll, I'll ask them then.
It seems a little odd, doesn't it? You got to admit that.
There's a lot of 7.17s.
Well, there's 1.17s also.
Okay.
Okay. So that next, with that, you know, Bruce, me and you, we looked over there and we talked about it that night. That with giving that garage bay up. I don't think we should do it. We, I think we're tight on space and I don't want to take that whole big area away from the ambulance. Because we were over there that night and they were training and that was full. People laying on the floor everywhere, bookworms going over here and actual on hands on over here and it, I don't think we should give that.
I don't think so either. I don't think we have an overabundance storage. I really don't.
And I know for the fire department, we shouldn't be cramming them tight. You know, if, if anything, we use a, if we have a spare bay, we should use it for fire or, or ambulance for our own right now. That's my opinion.
I'm indifferent on the whole deal. Like I said, I was, my, my business brain always kicks and I say, hey, can we get a little bit back from them? But I'm indifferent on it. I mean, if the, if the ambulance was fine with it, if they're, if you are all fine with it, you know what I mean? But.
Well, you heard his, his response was he doubts highly that the, that the county will give us anything back. I mean, I can ask him for a request if the council approves it, but my personal opinion is we can use that space a lot more efficiently and we have a need for it more than giving it up for free.
Are, are we using it right now?
They're all full. We'd have to move some.
Okay.
We would have to move things and shuffle things. I mean, it wouldn't be the big, but yeah, it's being utilized as we speak. Per se. If we needed a bay, we could open a bay up, but.
Yeah, and I mean, I look at it too as, as you know, they, somebody says, oh, I'm sure they would, the ambulance would probably say, we could do it. Well, they could come down here and do their training. But you know what? It's right there in their, their things. I don't feel after seeing that why they should move out of their area just to park a car by somebody else. And I understand why they want it, but if we had them parking there and then all of a sudden something came along and we needed more room, we'd have a hard time convincing the residents of Silver Lake that what do you mean you need something now? You were just giving some space away for six months or a year. I, I don't, I don't, we don't have an overabundance of room and I think we should hang on to it. Because we're not going to get, like Josh was saying, I don't believe we're going to get compensated for it. So.
I don't think we could be compensated enough, even if we were, to justify it. You know, a heated bay is worth.
Right.
You know what it's worth a month.
Yeah.
And you know what it would cost to replace that heated bay. So I'm not going to make that request. So if that's okay with everyone? I mean, I can request it.
Well, anybody else can make the motion on it if they want to. If they feel strongly on it.
Well, I don't want to take room from our ambulance either, but I also, you know, it's nice to have the sheriff there too. So, but.
But he said he's, it's not going to be like the guy is our patrol town. It's just so he don't have to drive so far to work every day.
He could come here, shoot, you got to be realistic. He could come here and grab his car and go to Stewart.
I, I wouldn't mind if he parked, parked out here in an empty space. He could park his car here, take the one and go. That wouldn't bother me one bit, but putting it in our building when we can use that space?
I'll leave it to you. You're the liaison. Leave it up to you to make that motion if you choose.
I'm not, I'm, I'm going to pass that one.
Okay.
I'm going to pass that one and I'm going to head on to the ambulance report. Uh, we had a March run report. Oh no, my thing froze. I got it. I got it. 10 runs in March. I'm glad to see that number low. That's one number we always want to see low. Six, uh, Silver Lake, fiber Cedar Crest, one New Tualate, uh, two Hale, one Winstead. Um, few things to, uh, touch on. They had a, their, their group had a meeting and they, they went over the tuition reimbursement statements and all that. And, um, they reviewed and decided to handle the way we have handled it in the past. The city pays for training upfront, new hire signed a reimbursement agreement. And that's, and the revisions have been made to, to the agreement reviewed by the ambulance service and the city attorney. There's one in here. Uh, ambulance policy has been revised, equally reflect the operations of service. Interviewed two new candidates. They have, one holds an EMR, one is an EMT bridge. One's enrolling in an EMT bridge course at Ridgewater, excuse me. And Mark is an EMT, he's a certified EMT. And staffing the on-call has been going good with no issues to report thus far. Now, I brought chief, co-chief here to go over, we had an issue, a, a question today.
Which one is co-chief? I'm being facetious. It sounded like somebody's name. Chief co-chief.
Assistant chief.
Assistant, chief and assist chief. I, I could agree to be an assistant chief if you want. Co-chief. Okay. Um, I'm going to let them. Now with these applicants, I had a question brought up and I'm going to, we're going to go over this together about, um, about qualifications to be an ambulance member. My understanding is, the question was eight minute response time. Does that mean, does it say anywhere in the ambulance service policies that they have to live in Silver Lake?
You can't make them live in Silver Lake.
No, you can't. All they have, and if they can't respond at eight minutes, they can sit in the call room for as long as they want.
Just make sure that it says that in your policy so we're not voting against our own policy.
I don't think it doesn't say that.
Because that's what it's always been, is that you had to be within seven minutes.
Eight.
Eight minutes.
And that's still the same.
Our, our previous chief brought a person on that we hired on from 11 miles away, but his, he was going to sit in the on-call room. And that's what we have. And one of these actually just moved to the new development. So one of them is within eight minutes and one of them is not, but they're going to be in the on-call room when they are scheduled.
And as I stated, I have zero issue with it. I just want to make sure we're not voting against policies that are there because I know that that's always been stated, is that you need to be within eight minutes. So if, 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 if it's not written in the policy, it used to be, if it's not written in their knowledge, fine, I have zero issue. And I, as I told you, I have zero issue.
We just wanted to clarify.
I'm just, I'm just not in the practice of voting against policies that are in place.
Policy hasn't changed.
If, if, as long as they come here, if they're more than eight minutes away. They can sit in the call room all day and be on-call.
But it's not a.
It's not a sleeping room. Absolutely not. That's made clear.
That's the thing you got to be careful.
Do you want that specifically stated in the policy if you cannot respond within eight minutes, you must.
Well.
They can use it, not have to.
Well, that doesn't have to be that way because if they are, they just have to stay here.
They could, they could be staying with their brother.
So let me clarify why though. Let me clarify why. If you turn somebody down that lives in St. Cloud that wants to be on this thing and they say, well, I can make it in time. I could be here. I'll just stay at a hotel, but they don't. What I'm saying is you just got to be careful because it could end up in, in a, in a discrimination.
And it has to say, it must say eight minutes somewhere.
It does say. It says that.
Eight minutes.
It's in the policy. It's the qualification.
So we're not changing the policy. We're just allowing them to be in that all call, on-call room. Because then they're under eight minutes. They don't even have to sit in there. They can hang around town.
We don't care where they're at.
Do anything they want.
We actually had one from Annandale last summer who worked for us.
Okay.
He just stayed here and went around town. So.
They can be wherever they want as long as they can respond within the eight months.
So it doesn't seem then.
But my question on that is, so if this person was from hypothetical Annandale and, and they're on the schedule, are you saying if they're on the schedule for Saturday night, they're supposed to sit in that room from six at night, whatever your times are. I'm going to just hypothetic. I don't know what they're, six at night to six in the morning, but not sleep?
Well, they could stay at their sister's place.
No, no, no. I'm talking about in there.
Yes, you're at, you're, that is correct. If that's where they're going to stay is in the room in the, I don't, the on-call room. If that's where they're going to stay, yeah, it's not a sleeping quarters. So if they're committing to be in that room, for instance, like our, uh, new hire, his job allows, you know, works nights or does his business work.
And the one from Annandale, actually I'll just say, he brought his video game system. He played video games.
As long as they're under the understanding that they can't.
That's what I was going to say. As long as you tell them they are not supposed to sleep in there, I don't think it's in our hands. What if he's in his recliner like this playing a video game?
Yeah.
Now is that.
Right.
You know what I mean? As long as he, yeah. He didn't climb in a bed. There is no bed in there. It's not a sleeping room. It's an on-call room.
They know it.
And they know that. To me, that is fine.
It's good enough for me. I'm just not going to vote against policies if they're in place.
Typically, the people that are willing to do that, to stay in an on-call room for 24 hours, they're either night shift, day shift where they're accustomed to be, to being awake during that time anyway. So it's their day off, so to speak. So.
So that, clarify that.
This, yeah, so this is part of the policy that you guys reviewed?
Mm-hmm.
So on page 39, the second page of it, you should, if somebody looked through this, they shouldn't have.
Which part of the pop, or what was your question?
I'm looking at the policy. You shouldn't have Silver Lake Police Department in there.
And there's section six. And there's section six is...
Section, section four says that the background checks are done by the Silver Lake Police Department.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but technically, the sheriff's department is the Silver Lake Police Department, so it should be changed to that.
No, they're not the Silver Lake Police Department.
They're the ones who service us.
They're acting as, yeah.
So, we have to change that. And in the section six there is the ability to respond within eight minutes. That's all it says about the response time. Section six, six on page thirty-nine. All service members will have the ability to respond within eight minutes on the page in.
I do, I do wanna go to thirty-seven, page thirty-seven, and it's not in the policies, but it's in the, um, the, the, well, training costs? I just, there was just, uh, there's bullet points there. Number three, it says achieve and maintain EMT-B license as permitted by the state of Minnesota and the National Registry Licensing Board. It doesn't say how long.
But the line above it is going there.
I know, that says one year. This says be in service for one year.
Well, you can't be in service if you're not certified.
Right, but, but...
So, they work kind of hand in hand.
I'm saying it should give them that limit, you know, like...
So, once you obtain your state of Minnesota licensure and the National Registry, it's two years. So, you'll, you have two years and then you have to recertify every two years to renew that licensure. So, I mean, if, if we do need to put that in there in that third one stating, I, I mean, the only way you can lose, lose your license is if you have a misdemeanor felony or something like that.
All right, I was just wondering if it shouldn't have a timeframe on it? I mean, you guys don't think it does?
It's just saying that they have to stay current with their licensure.
Right.
They just have to do their refreshers and just hold a...
One of, one of the things, and I'm jumping back and forth as I was looking through this, um, I was looking at things on here, but going back to that one where I was saying the background checks, how, how are you, how do, how does the ambulance check? I know they can drive. How do you know they got a current driver's license and a driving record that qualifies them to drive? Not that they got, God forbid, four DWIs and everything else.
Doesn't that come in with the background check?
Does it?
It should come in with the background check.
I'm pretty sure...
Do they do a license?
Do you guys do a certified license check? I, I have to, when we have drivers.
And it'll come back.
So, it's not just a criminal background check, it's a moving violations as well?
When people are hired, do we, do we hide their form?
Well, let's go back. When I was, for the liquor store, we did background checks, it came back with their driving record. For part-time employees at the liquor store, that's, and I don't, I never figured that out.
You guys are missing the point. What comes back that they're insurable? Somebody could have a valid driver's license and the city's insurance company will say, hey, I can't, we can't insure this guy.
It comes back with all your violations.
What makes them insurable?
Oh.
Who's making the judgment?
I'm saying there's, we should check into that to make sure...
That might be one, yeah, cause insurance is getting real bad. Real tight, real tough.
I mean, we just have to check, our, our, wherever the city carries the auto insurance should come back and say, what's the stipulations that they're gonna insure somebody? We don't wanna find out after the fact.
Right. It might even be, you know, it has to be more than five years on a DWI or more than five years on a reckless, something like that.
Right.
I do know that the background checks that we do, um, for non-emergency medical, is it actually tells us whether we can hire them or not, um, and it's basing it on everything that they do in our industry. I would think that the ambulance has that too.
Yeah, we don't, nothing that I'm aware of, that we actually do the research and stuff. I know that the background check is done, but as far as what parameters and what the requirements of meeting...
Do we do anything different or do we do anything for fire?
We just do it through the sheriff's office.
The same background check?
We have driver's license and background check.
To mean basically, they're gonna find out that they got a valid driver's license.
Yes.
That doesn't make them insurable.
That's on our end now to find out who we can insure. In case it comes back and you say you had a DWI three years ago.
Right, right.
Our insurance might say, uh-uh. It's gotta be seven years old or older or maybe never.
So, we just currently aren't doing that and need to start?
That's on our end, yeah.
I think we should, anybody that's a city, whether it's a fireman or any employee, if they're, anytime they touch a city vehicle, they gotta make sure they're insurable.
Does the background checks, they do fingerprinting and all that, or is...
No.
See, ours does, so I don't know why, what's the difference?
Yeah, I'm not sure, that's kind of a city...
Well, I mean, I think that'd be something we can check in, Diane, for them, okay? When you get a chance.
Okay, so as I was reticating about that section five, it says all prospective members must submit to a physical evaluation. I don't believe that it ever does.
No.
So, when they say physical evaluation, are we talking...
It says include test for communicable diseases.
Yeah, communicable diseases, um, yeah.
As permitted by law. Is there any laws that you can even ask them questions anymore?
That's a good question. If you're, if you're working on the ambulance and you have a communicable disease, I mean, is that something that, that...
I'm surprised the attorney didn't get some of this.
Well, and we have to, again, going back to what we do, is we have to have a med card, which is just a, a quick examination, you know, by the chiropractor or whatever. I mean, you guys have that?
No.
I mean, it's really not even a physical, it's just to make sure that they're approved to drive, um...
No, we don't currently do anything.
That's a tough one, because I mean, you're asking, well, I guess it's also a, kind of a volunteer position too, because you're asking information I don't know that you should necessarily have, but if you want somebody with TB or something...
Right, but then again, I don't know that you can ask those questions for...
Well, it says permitted by law. You'd have, we'd have to get the new sheet, I know what we can ask, what we can't ask. Maybe that's something...
Well, did the attorney really look at this? So, he's saying it's okay?
Well, if he left it on there...
Well, I believe you can, you can acquire physicals for a job.
Of course, you could, as a fire department, could you?
But we don't, so...
But you don't?
You do for fire?
Yes, we do.
Because it's more of a, well...
A physical exertion.
Right.
Apparently, people at Cedar Crest...
Yeah.
Can of worms.
Right, right. Lifting up the pot and transferring and CPR.
So, okay, I mean, is this something that needs action tonight, or is this, because it seems like there's just a couple of things to maybe just take a P-CAT quick and...
That's what I would say, we, but there was no action on that.
Oh, okay.
There was just act, I have action higher.
Yeah.
And then we can put them notes together and get some more info built up on all these questions. Ready?
So, my question on this, um, training costs, and I know there's history, who cares about history? So, how are you gonna collect this?
Well, we're hoping that, you know, just that contract that there's, I don't know if you call it a contract, but the agreement, that they would be responsible for the cost if they didn't fulfill their obligation.
I would say the best you could do is send them one letter if they did leave and...
Wouldn't it be the city that would collect? I mean, just like, if we don't pay our water bill?
It's not gonna be personally...
I'm not even going over years, you know. We can honor anything. We did tuition for people who quit and it's, do you go after them? Because we're a small community, do you, you know, pursue them and possibly have bad reps, you know? But at the same time, you signed this agreement, so...
Yeah, we're doing a favor to extend it and...
We're trying to help you, so you didn't fill your...
I, I think the most important thing is to, and I always say this, to, to default to policy and just send a letter evenly across the board, no matter who it is from here going forward, just send a letter. And whether or not they, they do, but you know what I mean? Because, and I think the attorney would say the same thing, because if you don't do that evenly across the board for every single person that doesn't fulfill that, no matter if they're friend or family or whatever, then you find yourself in trouble later in the future, when you, when you really wanna try to collect from somebody that, that's, you know, went through it and messed around and said, you know what, I'm not even gonna try anymore.
And I would think that there wouldn't be any reason why you would not want to send it.
I would think the only letter you'd have to send them is a copy of the paper that they sign.
You did not fulfill your agreement.
You did not fill this right here. Here's the terms that you signed.
Right, exactly. And then from there, if they don't comply and they don't, you know, send in the...
It keeps the honest people honest.
Right. And then it's up to the city to determine, is it worth pursuing from a legal matter? I mean, what you're gonna, um, you know, having expense and legal fees worth what you're gonna gain, but then it also sets precedence that we are serious about it and, you know, you do need to reimburse if you don't fulfill. But that's a city decision at that point. How far you wanna pursue?
Well, it's your policy.
Well, it's our policy, but as far as, you know, do you want to get an attorney?
Once it goes to legal, is what she's saying.
If it goes to legal, let's say they don't pay. We've sent the letter, we've asked for the reimbursement, we get no response, it's crickets, you know, do you wanna send another letter? I would say, yes, we would send a follow-up letter. And then after that, you know, are you going to send another letter saying that you're going to be taking this to court, you know, pursuing legal? Then that becomes a city issue, if you're gonna pursue that and what, what's your, weighing out your risks or benefits and costs.
I would just think as long as everything from today forward is the same, every single case, keep it documented if you have one. If it happens twice, exactly what you did with the first one.
Absolutely.
Never like, you sent one guy one paper, but the next guy you sent nine. Just do every single one the same. Treat them all the same. If you're gonna go after it, go after it, but do them all.
Yeah, that should be, I mean, standard just...
Send them a letter and, and, and write it off?
What I'm saying is, is, I, I look at it the flip side. This is just me. If I was having somebody sign a contract like this, I'd prorate it. You give me ten months, that means instead of fourteen hundred dollars, you owe me two hundred and ninety-five dollars or whatever. They gave you ten months. If they, if they end up having to move down here for these reasons, they don't owe you fourteen hundred dollars, they may owe you two hundred and fifty. But they gave you eight months of good, you could prorate this thing, so you're not scrambling at the end to get somebody that gave you eight months or ten months of good service and they had to leave and say, you owe us fourteen. You know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, you're not treating the person who worked for one month versus the person that worked for eight months the same.
That's all, and you're gonna have much more success collecting it.
But then, would you keep it the same no matter what the reason is? If they had to leave for eight months?
Well, I think there are reasons down here.
Right, right. But the person that had to leave because they were relocating after eight months, or the person that...
Just says equit...
What you're missing, the point, they still gave you eight months of service.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. We'd have to be consistent though and not make it based on the reason. It would be based solely off of the time that they did service.
Then just rewrite this that says it'll be prorated.
Right. Based on service, not reason of leaving.
Cause they still, I mean, that's how I feel, that they gave you a good service.
Shouldn't be based on the, why they left, but how much time they...
Re, you know...
Cause that's a judgment call.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Rewrite that with a prorate.
And that's just an opinion.
I mean, you guys, you guys go over it with your committee and...
Right.
See if that worked, you know, if everybody agrees on it. Okay? Want some council action? Page honor. Forty-four. The ambulance is requesting approval to hire Allison White for the ambulance service, pending clear background and negative drug screen. She's been reviewed by the executive committee and approved, and she is currently certified as an EMR with an EMS RB. She will be enrolling in the EMT bridge course at Ridgewater. And as soon as the council, if the council approves her, she will be scheduling already as an EMR, so she can learn the Silver Lake service. So, I am requesting to hire Allison White as an ambulance service member.
As an EMR right now?
As an EMR.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. So, I guess, I, I know you clarified my question last time, if you can go through an EMR and then say, I'm not going the rest. So, when this person's already an EMR, now she's gonna be on EMT, she's still gotta take that whole, she's still gotta pay the same amount and take that whole class?
No, there's no bridge class.
It's the bridge.
So, it's a shorter course.
Okay. And is it less money?
Yes, yeah.
But you can't start and stop.
Right.
You can't take an EMT course and then drop out halfway, at the halfway mark.
And just go EMR.
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the answer.
Is for, to hire Mark Cornell. He has been approved by the executive committee of the ambulance and Mark is currently certified as an EMT. And, uh, I make a motion to hire Mark Cornell as an EMT on the Silver Lake ambulance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? How long has it taken you guys to get back the background checks and the drug?
They're back.
They're back already? Super. No other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
One more, quick question, just on policy, just a clarification, page thirty-seven, it was on here, just the on-duty one, and, and I just went, so I didn't see how long, okay, so when it's, on-duty means time spent in actual response to call. So, how often do, does a person have to be on the schedule to be considered on-duty?
That's a good one.
Cause I didn't see a, a time, how many times that they would have to be scheduled monthly or weekly to be considered on-duty. I didn't see that in the call, unless I might, and I might have missed it.
We currently don't have anything stating that you have to be on X amount of hours per month just to stay as active duty with the service. Um, I know years ago, we've dabbled with that idea. As long as you're picking up shifts and helping out your active duty, um, as long as you are current with your EMS VR, EMS RB licensure, you're active duty, you know, making a willing effort to cover shifts.
So, I mean, realistically, somebody could miss months in a row and still be considered active duty. And I think that this kind of comes back to the prorating, the, let's say they're there for a year and they were on the schedule for eight months and you say, okay, well, you were here for eight months, but they missed three months in a row or something. That's why I think that there probably needs to be clarification on how many times to, to be considered as, was it active duty or on duty?
Active duty.
Active duty, how many times that they need to be in the schedule monthly to, otherwise it, that kind of blows the prorating thing out of the water too.
Well, definitely too, if we were going to, you know, go back for reimbursement of tuition, personally, I'm going to look on the schedule and see, well, how many times were you on the schedules?
Right.
You know, versus...
And I see what you're saying. It just kind of comes back to him on, on that amount of months that you were there though, because if you're staying consistent and you're, you're saying, okay, well, you were here for eight months, but then realistically that person only was on the schedule maybe three times in that eight months?
Right, right.
Now you're kind of thinking, man, you know, they were only here for three, you know what I mean?
And at the same time, as far as active duty goes, you can have one person on the service who is committed to doing the, currently the every fourth day rotation. So they're on that shift, on the rotation every fourth day. But another person on the service may have came to us, wanted to join and said, you know, I'm able to work, um, three or, you know...
Four days a month.
Four days a month and one weekend.
Yep.
So that's what, you know, we've agreed that yes, that's a good enough contribution to the department. That's something that we need. So we're trying to allow some flexibility also, not saying that they have to be on this standard rotation and follow, follow suit. Or because of their work hours or such, maybe they aren't able to do 12-hour shifts, they can do six. So to set a hard, fast, you know, time commitment.
But I think we, I think we worded it that way so that it just says, uh, the active rotation. So whatever that active rotation is, like each individual, it doesn't, you guys, track.
But at the same time, I understand what you're saying though too, Josh, that maybe to have some type of at least a minimum.
Yeah, you should be there, I mean, at least a couple of times a month.
At least a minimum, you know? Not that they have to, you know, have a maximum amount of hours, but at least a minimum.
Because that makes that whole prorating thing kind of difficult too, because they may have been on the active roster that whole time, but maybe they didn't even show up. But then if you try to tell them, well, hey, we're, we're going to go after you for the whole thing, they say, no, 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 I was on active duty.
Right.
Okay, but active duty, you can't predict. You're on call time, you can't...
But active duty, you can make stipulations on what, what you need, how many times you need to be there to be considered.
Okay, but there's been 10 calls in the last month?
Right.
You can't predict who's going to...
Yeah, but they got a schedule for the shifts.
Yeah.
If you're on a schedule, he's just, he just said to get them on the sched, they have to be on the schedule X amount of times a month.
So I think we're confusing terms, active duty and as an active member.
Yeah.
You know, the active duty is when you're really on a call, you're responding.
Being on the schedule is where he is more.
And we're talking as an active member. What constitutes as an active member? That would be the number of hours.
Okay?
Yep, I think that...
So then the other, the last question I had, which I had earmarked was on page forty-one, you're going to, the ambulance is now going to give the city clerk an audio recording of your meetings?
Mm-hmm.
So, so you give a meeting, you guys do your meetings in an area, so you, you talk about this person's joining, I'm just, I, we're going to clean the office, but then when you get into personal data, I don't think that should be on this recording.
Not at all.
Okay.
That's closed comments at the end. That's more, it's our training.
I mean, it shouldn't even be on that recording.
Right, no. We keep that to more specific to training and...
Right. Okay. So how's it going?
Good. I cleaned the office on Friday, so...
Was it on video?
It was looking pretty bad. Yeah. It smells wonderful now.
But no, I...
So with these two now, so I have to jot it down, so what do we, how many you got? What's your staff, what's your roster?
He asked this question. Okay, so we have...
Twelve, eleven or twelve.
I, I guess I'd like EMRs and EMTs, if you can remember.
We have, with these new ones?
No, total.
I thought it was eleven.
Yeah.
Because you had three from the fire department and these two new ones and you had five before. Or was it six before? It's eleven or twelve.
We had four.
It sounds good. It sounds like thirteen though.
Justice.
We've gotten seventeen different answers.
Somewhere between five and twenty.
You gotta have at least two hands.
Yeah.
But this'll make four or five EMTs now, right?
Yes.
With, with Mark? It's gonna be four or five?
It'll be five EMTs with Mark. And so once we do...
Actually, six with Ryan.
Okay, yeah, so once we get Mark's probationary period completed and get him on a rotation...
You'll have six, huh?
Yeah, I'll have six.
And then what do you got for EMRs, do you think? Probably another half dozen?
So then we got five, Tyler, Justice, Ryan, Jackie.
Jared.
And Jared, yeah.
Five.
So five, yep. And then, um, also, actually you can, you know, for fill-in, John, he's going to pick up some shifts also, so they're more, they're not on rotation, yeah.
Great. Good job.
Twelve or thirteen, well, May's schedule is, I mean, it's out.
We have a couple shifts that are filling out now and, or that need to be filled, but they're getting filled out, so we're making it happen.
So have you had to rely on Alina for the 24/7 during the week or anything? You fill the shifts, huh?
Looks like Alina called, had a mutual aid.
We've had mutual aids with them.
Yeah.
Um, and I mean, that happens, so...
So we're getting daytime shifts filled? That was my biggest worries that we're, but we're getting them filled and we're not having to go, good, good job.
You know, and our primary goal was to make sure that we had weekends and nights covered, you know, that's what we really wanted to focus on, but we've been doing exceptionally well doing the daytime shifts.
So do you feel, do you feel your day shifts will be filled by people that, individuals that aren't spending 300 hours a month doing day shifts? I'm just being frank. I don't want anybody burnt out because they're covering every day.
Right, exactly.
And we talk about it too, don't burn yourself out.
Right.
We have 24/7 coverage.
Because that's what you got a lineup for.
Exactly.
Don't burn yourself out, so...
Yep.
And I think we really tried to, in April, to make sure that we had it covered because everything was so new and we were trying to get everything else structured and in an order. Um, so we tried our hardest to get that covered and then now, just looking into May, if, if we can't do a Tuesday or a Thursday, we'll have Alina do it. And with our new hires coming on and some other day shifts being picked up, so we'll be able to kind of breathe, you know, mix that up a little bit too.
Get in the groove and...
Yeah, and just figure out what these new hires, what their availability is going to be a little more specifically and...
Okay.
Well, it sounds like it'll help having a couple more veterans on there. These people look like they have more time in the go.
Good job. Thank you. Unless you have questions?
Thanks for...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, let's move down to the, uh, liquor store report.
Did you guys meet? Yes, we did. Um, we met on Tuesday. When we met, we didn't quite have our, um, I don't know if I got to change my meeting dates because we didn't have our financial report yet, um, so maybe I'll change them to a little bit later in the week if I can. They're going to get a little bit tougher now that I got my work season, but, um, so we'll start going over the report. Uh, both new part-time employees have started, although both are new bart, new to bartending and still require some help and training. They are both doing, um, very good job. The pool tournament was held at the auditorium. It went over very well for the auditorium. I believe he said somewhere in the neighborhood of 3,700 made for that, so it was, um, which is another reason why we were a little bit flabbergasted by the amounts, the, the budget this month, but, um, there were some games up at the liquor store as well. They had to fix the ice maker. Um, it's working well now too. Uh, they're going to have the patio out soon, which will be nice. Um, had music in two nights and both went over very well. Um, people enjoyed the new music. Like he had the tweeters, didn't he? Um, we will be hosting some food trucks on Wednesdays and we'll continue to try to find more. Food specials are going and continue to do well, um, continue to book more weddings and other events, uh, at the auditorium. And I had some, so we had some notes here too on our meeting that we went over. I think he said the pool tournament made around 3,700. He had the Grubers in there, um, made around 3,300 that day. He, he is feeling, in the software thing that we were talking about when she was in here and she was, she was saying that, um, you know, it may be making up for things in the past. He said there's also seems to be an issue with the software not communicating and I think you guys had this issue before too with inventory from here to there or something. So that problem is still there. So, and I know that, um, he's attending, next week he's attending, I think Diane, you're going to it as well, or is that Carissa?
Chris.
Chris is going to, they're, they're attending a meeting next week and they're going to have some computer systems and stuff there that he's going to look at. Um, I asked him about, um, budget at that time. He said, uh, he had no concerns, should be good. Um, the report says differently. Um, computers and software, he was looking into that, employees, um, he has enough employees right now for basic operations, um, has to cover, uh, but he said that when it comes to events and stuff, he'd like to get a couple more just part-timers, you know, that could show up for events and things. Um, as far as maintenance, got the ice maker fixed. They haven't had a chance to get into the exhaust fan issues, although they did get a couple new filters for the fryer, but that exhaust fan just doesn't seem to be pulling the smoke out back there. Um, the motor is a long ways from the room.
Doesn't design to do...
Yeah, it's not, it's, it doesn't seem like it's, yeah, it's around the corner and it just doesn't seem like it's designed to pull that smoke out of there. Um, the electric burger press is having issues. Um, they, they had to turn it up more and he was doing some troubleshooting with it, but I think they told him the plates were burning out, which he found was odd because they're metal plates and it just, it doesn't seem to make sense. They are working for now, but it does have issues.
We got that from the local industry.
Yeah, he said one side is bad.
You should check into that warranty on that.
Um, I think you guys...
From who? From who? Because they were discussing that.
One of the low, who, who we buy the coolers and the refrigerators from, one of them guys sold it to us. Because we were going to get one from a different place and the vendor was sitting there at the bar and he goes, I got them. There should be something around from that, but we didn't pay for that.
Okay.
That was, not us. But the vendor was sitting at the bar the day we were talking about, he goes, I have that.
Yeah, but it's been a while already.
Two years, two years.
Yeah.
But I thought, I mean, that's a commercial, I thought it had a five-year warranty on it, to tell you the truth, but...
That'd be something he needs to look into then. Um, they've got a new system in place for accountability with the, you know, we have the pull tab shortages now and that, and that's always bugged me. Um, and I understand that it can get busy and things, but they've got a system in place now where they're only going to have one person per shift be accountable for those. Um, and, and so they, I think between he and Roxy, they helped put that in place and hopefully that works out and we don't, uh, see those shortages anymore. Um, Gouda was the food truck that's coming in, All About Gouda or whatever. Um, and I think that they had to start locking up the auditorium here at night because I think they're having loitering issues and also some at the bar, but they're working on that too. So, that, those were just my notes. Um, if you look at the financial report, uh, it shows a significant loss, which I guess we got a kind of an explanation towards that tonight. Um, and I, I are going to talk more about that later, but most of it looks like it comes from sales of goods. Um, operating, operating revenues are, uh, down by almost five grand from this time last year. Um, so a lot of that is sales of goods. And if you go to the next report, you see, not the next one, but the, the third one on page fifty, you're going to see most of that comes from off sale. Um, off sale NA, 113% decrease, which is odd. And then you're going to see also off sale liquor, um, 15% decrease. And then the rest of that is coming in off sale wine, um, over in the current month, far right, 59%. So, I mean, it's, there was a little bit of it in, in their wages, but most of it looks like it's, and I'm hoping it's the, the reporting area compensating from what, like what, um, uh, she was talking about on the financial reporter here tonight, but we'll get into it deeper. But it didn't look so, didn't look so good for what he was making off some of these events.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying is these last two months, if he hadn't had those events, he's would really look bad.
Yeah.
Ice golfing.
Yeah.
So I, I'm, and that's something that I'm going to try to talk to Carissa and, and Owen about and, and sooner rather than later, because it, yeah, if you look at this time last year's, um, total operating revenue is 72,000 and then 57 this time and it's just costs of, well, also costs of goods, um, have gone up 10 grand.
Yeah, but I guess my question, I'd, I'd look at it, is he, is he staying ahead of the cost of goods? Everything else is skyrocketing in the world. It is what it is.
Prices?
Yeah.
Well, he did, he did, he did raise prices on, on cases and on beers in there, but maybe food prices have to go up a little bit too.
Didn't he just raise those prices though? I mean, I think it was...
He just raised them recently. Um, so he, I mean, the effort's being made there and I guess you'll see after this month, did those raises, were they significant? Did they make a difference? Um, but yeah, and, and he, and they've been working on bulk buys too.
That's right.
So hopefully we see some dividends here from that. That's going to pay off hopefully.
So that's bigger expenditures.
Yeah, that, that'll work out over the next couple of months too.
Does he realize that running down his inventory doesn't make his profit go up?
Yeah.
I'm just saying is, is if you run, if you keep your inventory constant, that shows on your profit. If, if someone, if someone says, well, I'll run my inventory way down so I'll be profitable, but actually you take your inventory helps offset your cost, that, you should keep a steady inventory, which also affects your profit.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll check with him to see if his, if his inventory has been steady, but I know that they made some major purchases.
Well, right, that's what I was getting at here.
Yeah. So, and, and they're hoping that that, like I said, pans out because it'll save money in the long run, because they, they saved quite a bit on bottles and cases, or bottles specifically, so...
Right, but what, but what I'm getting at is, is if you look at, if you look at sale of goods and cost of goods, your cost of goods is telling you is what you sold, not what you bought. If you, if you, if you sold 500 cases, that's going to show up as your cost of goods because that reflects your inventory.
Okay. And that's something that I'm, I'm new to and trying to figure out too, so...
You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
You sell all this, so that means you have to replenish it.
Yep.
So that means, are you selling it at the right price?
Yes, because when you bring in your new inventory, the way prices are going up, yep.
Yeah, that's probably where he's getting stung. And it's just like you can't even keep up with it.
Right.
Going up so fast.
Okay. Um, yeah, I didn't have much more there, um, other than we've got our, uh, council requests here, so for the two new employees that were brought on, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the hiring of Julie, uh, should I say Huesman? I don't even know how you say their last name. Um, new bartender at 1333 an hour.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Never seen a name like that, spelled like that.
And, um, request for, uh, to approve the hiring of Sabrina Pavan, Pavan or Paven, is new bartender, 1333 an hour.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
And then he put, we, we didn't quite know if we needed this or not, but I said, well, we can't take action on it if it's not in the agenda. So it was council to close, uh, or request to close the south entrance of the parking lot. I didn't know if that was something he could just get a hold of Dale about, but to close the entrance of the south parking lot and west of liquor store after the fire department and car bike show, but I think that's, that was already in their request, wasn't it?
Right, but you can, let's make a motion as long as you got it.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to approve that request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, any other discussion? Go ahead.
Okay, so here, for the discussion, and the reason why he said that is because he's having a DJ when they're done. So it was already going to be closed, but I said, well, you better have...
Right.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, and then, request to approve closing south parking lot entrance and west parking lot of Muni, July, uh, June 24th, 2022, to have an outside band and dance.
Is that a motion?
And I will make that motion, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have.
Tell you what, I'm going to, are we good for municipal liquor store? I'm going to move around a little bit here. We've got some people sitting here and, and I'll come back to those. First one, you guys don't mind? We're going to go jump down to new business. I'm going to, uh, Cedar Crest emergency preparedness plan. We're gonna go jump down to new business. I'm gonna, Cedar Crest Emergency Preparedness Plan. Damon's here from down there. Come on up here.
All right, well, thanks for having me here, and thanks for this meeting. My name's Damon Ewald. I'm with Cedar Crest of Silver Lake. And I am here to briefly discuss the possibility of getting an agreement signed between Cedar Crest of Silver Lake and the city of Silver Lake. Uh, the state, uh, state of Minnesota was out to visit us and look at our emergency preparedness plan, and they had one question. And that question was this: If a major fire or impactful tornado would strike Cedar Crest presumably head-on, what are our arrangements with other facilities that could assist in receiving residents for care and sheltering temporarily? And that timeframe would be less than a week.
Okay, you got less than a week, okay.
So what we're looking for is an agreement that we can come to that would allow us to maybe use the auditorium temporarily in an emergency disaster scenario.
And then you and I were chatting about, you thought you might have some avenues for us. Let's say this happened, and the power was out. You were, you were saying something about a generator.
That's where I was gonna go with this.
Well, I would think any city looking for a generator to help run power, run anything they would need, there should be grants and avenues basically of free money to, or grant money that could get you a generator, depending on what kind of size of generator that you'd need. Given what's been happening in the world these days with emergency money floating around, there's probably grant money floating out there if someone was to write a grant or look for that kind of money, at least to get something started, if you wanted to pursue the generator.
Well, I guess my question on that, let's say this, please join in, the city went into an agreement with that. Well, is, is our part of going into an agreement with you is, here's the structure. I mean, as part of the agreement, we have to, in a sense, make sure there's a generator, make sure it's cool. I, I wanna know, I think as a city, we should know what's the expectations of the city for this agreement.
My expectations is they do not need a generator. Uh, if something like this happens, a tornado, um, it's very unpredictable what could be happening, and the carnage that could be all over the place. The state of Minnesota just wants to see that we have a, an agreement. It could be an agreement with Molly's to have us use their parking lot. It could be the auditorium. It could be the park, just to assess damage.
It's not even the Russian walls, it's just an area.
Something, a something that could work in an emergency.
When you say up to a week, then obviously it would be potentially housing them for a week. And that's where I think that the, the generator and the air conditioning and things like that would come into play.
Right.
Especially if the power is out in town from a tornado.
Mm-hmm.
Or they have a fire.
Yeah.
You know, there, and the other thing you and I chatted about is, uh, you know, I think, when we chatted, you said if something came out, obviously the city wouldn't have this stock with beds ready for you. You know, that, that falls back onto your guys' lap.
Right, right. I looked up some beds, just adult cots that would hold to two hundred and fifty pounds, and they run about fifty to a hundred and fifty dollars per cot, depending on what you would need. As far as water, convenience stores, anything for water, portable water, and for food, we would just use local establishments. If something like this happened, I have a good sense the community would come together, and a lot of other communities would just pile on board. It would just be the communication and collaboration of, okay, now what are we gonna do? What's your plan B if Cedar Crest was just nailed with a tornado on? That's the one thing I don't have. I have, uh, I have transportation to take our residents anywhere. I just need something close by that would be temporarily until ambulances and other things could come in and get them to the hospitals. We'll call it a blank go hutch. And maybe it's less than a week. I would think it'd be less than a week, but I had to put some kind of timeframe in there. Maybe it's three days. That would be great.
I think it would be definitely something for the attorney to review, because there, to make sure that there's not the expectation that if they were housed here for a week, that we wouldn't be able to, to make sure that there was electricity, if they needed some sort of life-supporting, you know what I mean?
Oxygen.
Yeah, you know, things like that, that it would definitely not fall back on the city where their family could say, hey, you were in an agreement with them to house them for a week, and now my, my loved one died, and we're coming after you. So, um, I think that that would be important, but yeah, I'm not against the idea.
Well, this is a, like, the auditorium is a storm shelter anyway, right? I mean, if there was, if there was a, a complete power outage in town, isn't this where a lot of people would come?
I would think.
And so, I mean, it would be okay to have a shared facility, right?
I don't think it's a fallout shelter, but it's just the biggest structure in town.
And it's concrete.
And we've talked about the generator thing before, but it would be a good idea.
I'm pretty open to however the language needs to read.
Yep.
It could be, you don't, you don't need to have the generator. You could also do all liability release during emergency.
I think that would be necessary.
So anything goes, we're all trying to help each other here. Sorry that this happened, or.
Something to the effect that our doors are open if you need them.
Yeah.
If something happens, we can, we can do, it's, it's a, it's an option at least.
It's a roof over the head.
It's something, right?
I'm receptive. I just, I always bring up, I, I kinda think I kinda play the devil's advocate on things, but I'm definitely receptive to the idea. I'm just thinking to myself now, let's say there was a fire, let's say there was a tornado, you already have, you know, a hundred residents from town poured into this place, and now they're coming and saying, hey, but we have this contract with you. These people are gonna have to go because we have a contract with you guys. So there's gonna, I mean, it's gonna, I'm receptive. I think it's gonna take some, a lot of talking, though.
Well, if the whole town wanted to come in here, it'd be first come, first served anyway.
Yeah, but if the con, but if there's a contract in place.
They're first.
It says, you know, are we then booting out people whose homes were destroyed down here? So we're just, we gotta be careful about how we go with them. Definitely receptive to the idea.
I'm okay with it not being a contract. It can be an agreement.
Yep.
It can be first come, first served. I'm still okay with that.
Yep.
That's the way it goes. As long as we can get some kind of an agreement, if it's first come, first served, I'm still fine with that. At least we're trying.
Just something with some words in it and have the attorney look at it maybe, or?
Yeah. Well, there, there's a flip side to, to me on this, is there also might be some advantages to the city to make that right, in the sense we may be able to get a grant for the generator.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
So, you know what I mean?
Yep.
We wanna make sure we do it right.
Yep.
We can always change the agreement.
Mm-hmm. Right.
It could be a win-win, in other words.
Right. Yeah, win for you. Obviously, you can tell we wanna support you. That's not the issue.
Yeah, and we're totally open to, and I mean, if you push it hard and you're able to get the generator with some of that ammunition and the amount of people in town, wonderful. That would be great.
So maybe a little legwork on your end. You're in the business, so that I'm sure there are other, um, people in the same business as you that have maybe gone through this process, and maybe they know whether or not there are grants out there.
Mm-hmm.
Because, yeah.
Absolutely.
It would, uh, mutually beneficial agreement would, is always great.
Right. So how should we take the next step about getting this agreement drawn up? Would that be something?
I can give you a, a mock, and you can fill in the blanks however you'd like. Gives you something to, somebody, if somebody wants to read it, change the words, or totally write something different, we're, we're okay with that.
Do you have a few copies of that?
I do, I have three.
I'll take one. Did you want?
As long as Diane gets one, I, I can, I can run through it tomorrow.
I just typed up something very simple that the state of Minnesota would probably give the nod.
For, so she has it for later.
Well, yeah, I just. I was just thinking I'd give this to you. You can make a copy and send it to me. Okay?
And a lot of this is disaster situations. And they're just looking for your plan A, your plan B, this is plan C and D all of a sudden.
See, we're gonna look at this, you know, my first thought was, wow, we'll run it by the Kevin Matthews-type guy on our attorney. But that doesn't necessarily, you know, we're, we're, when you think about it, we're all thinking tornado. They could have a fire.
Yep.
Which then, the county disaster, wouldn't have nothing to do with it, because you had a fire. You see what I'm saying? It could be that way too.
Yeah, it could be a water pipe burst, and the whole thing flooded out. Could be something like that, just involving them only.
You wanna shoot this by the attorney when you get back from your deal? Okay. How much time do you have to get this?
As long as I just let the, if the state were to come back and look, I would just make some notes that it's going through the town board, and that would be acceptable.
Okay, super. Just, just so you know, we're on board, we just wanna get it worded right.
Yep, that's wonderful. Yeah, we wanna make it as easy as possible. We also are trying to comply with what they want us to do. First, we're trying locally. Of course, there's.
Great. So how do you think that the trees got cleared out down there?
Looks wonderful. Looks really good. Makes a big difference.
Yeah. That was still some money we had left over from when we originally put the trail in. So we closed the.
Can you say that spider?
That's one of those stupid box cellar bugs. Still, we saved, we hung on to the money for, we knew that we were gonna need it, so it didn't cost the city nothing to clear it out.
Major difference in just being able to walk that trail and view. You don't have to look between the trees. It's just wide open right now.
That's nice. Good.
Yeah, people can walk closer to the water too, and.
That's nice.
I think it looks great. I love it.
Great.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
All right, we'll be in touch, or you'll be in touch. We'll just.
Yeah, we'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You do. Put it on here.
Sorry we made you sit so long.
Don't give it to Doc.
Oh, thanks. Trying to find where we got the.
All right, have a good weekend.
Thank you. These last few won't take very long, so thanks for your patience back there. Community development?
Can we, can we just, can you just move on and do that next one?
Yeah, I think that's, yeah.
The lawn meter?
Yeah.
Okay. What about it?
Well, come on up.
Hello, Mayor Council. I'm Andrew Feeblecoren, two oh one Century Lane, here in Silver Lake. Um, I'm requesting kind of a deference from the policy in regards to the water meters. I purchased a meter back in March of last year for, I believe the total was two, two hundred and forty-two dollars and ten cents. Um, I recently sold my property, and, um, I contacted the city, I believe it was last week, wondering if there was the option for a buyback, 'cause the meter's pretty much brand new. Um, and I was told that that wasn't an option at the time, and so I had asked if I could then just take it with me, 'cause I'm moving outside of the city of Silver Lake, and I was told that the meter had to stay with the property. I'm not opposed to taking it with me, just to monitor my water usage at my other property, but if somebody has the ability to, you know, get it at a discounted rate, 'cause it's used, I'd be open to that option, if that is an option. Um, because I also had to buy adapters to the water meter itself, so I mean, I have upwards of probably close to three hundred dollars into a water meter that I did appreciate, because, you know, I was putting a lot of water on my yard last year, and so I appreciated the, um, the rebates that came back to that. So just looking to see if there was an option for potentially a buyback at a discounted rate. I wouldn't be requesting the entire amount, if that is an option.
So when we sell these things to them, it's theirs forever then? That's.
It's the, it's the home.
The home didn't buy it, though. I don't, I don't like this policy.
I don't like it either.
Do you have the policy in here?
Yes.
Which page? I printed it out.
We just changed that policy.
Well, I just don't understand why somebody.
Because we were having so much trouble with people coming in saying, I didn't have a water meter. I don't wanna pay my bill.
Right.
And we changed the policy. You buy it, stays with there, I believe. So that.
The policy reads meters are not transferable and shall not be used.
That's different.
But let me, let me just, let me just ask a question. I'm gonna really be general on this. A person like this gentleman could say, I don't wanna use that meter anymore, and he could throw it in the dumpster.
Yeah.
He can take it with him, if you ask me.
He could take it with him.
That's what he's saying.
But no, she's saying it stays with the home.
Right.
And I'll, I'll, I'll say, based on the policy itself, I wasn't sure if it meant by transferable to another property. So if I had two properties in town, if I went and watered my, you know, watered there, if I took it out in the county and ran my water, I could rack up, you know.
That's how I read it.
And it's, it's not transferable from one property of yours to another property of yours.
Within the city.
So I understand it.
So the area that I'm moving to, this, there isn't this program, and like I said, if you don't wanna buy it back, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure it was okay. I took it with me, um, so that you guys were aware that it came with me. Or, like I said, I have up to the option if some, if you guys wanna do something with a buyback.
Well, I mean, he, he owns it.
That's my thought.
If, if, if he wants to sell it back to us at a reduced price, how are we losing there?
Well, what my thought on that, when I heard about this, is that if we buy, buy it back from him at a reduced price, then next time somebody asks, we gotta do the same thing, and for the same amount, and then how do we resell it, and for what amount?
You always sell them at replacement cost. I don't care if it's twenty-five years old, 'cause if it breaks, gotta get another one.
Why, why?
They used to, we used to turn them in.
Why isn't it just sold with the house?
Well, because he bought it. It's his property.
He bought it. He paid for it.
It's not connected to the house.
So is your refrigerator and whatever?
Yeah, but that's connected to the house, and that, and that's in your, um, that is in your purchase agreement, your, your appliances and this and that. Um, your stuff that's connected to the house.
I mean, if he chose to sell, sell it with the property, that'd be one thing, but I mean, it's his property if he didn't.
I don't think, in my opinion, I don't think the city's in a position to buy it back at a reduced price.
I don't think so either.
I mean, but I still think he could, I mean, I, I have one. I put it on the side meter. It's rolled up in a bucket. It's in my basement, because I don't want it to freeze. If I space out and forget to hook it back up, well, that means I didn't do anything with it. So you understand what I'm saying is, is, I mean, where does it say in here that it's, it's part of the home?
Well, I think she's reading it as non-transferable.
I read that.
Transferable.
But I, I see what you're saying.
It's his property. He can take it and do anything. He can throw it in garbage if he wants.
But wouldn't the people, did you ever offer it?
No, I didn't, and that was something that I didn't think of until after the fact.
That would be something that a person could, but it doesn't have to.
Three hundred bucks is three hundred bucks nowadays, so.
Okay, well, our record shows that you paid a hundred and forty-six for it.
Uh, I have a check.
In February.
I guess I have a check that says otherwise, so I'm not sure.
Really? That's weird.
But.
Maybe it was three, maybe that included his water bill.
Well, there's a, there's the actual price and a five percent.
There is a five percent. I don't know what that's entirely for, but. Either or, I mean, like I said, obviously, I don't know if you guys thought about doing lease programs. I don't know how often you guys have them turned in. If I originally bought it, they had a used one lined up on the table, and they said, go grab a new one out of a box. So, um, I mean, if it was a hundred dollars for no matter how long you had it, or, like I said, I respect the idea. If you guys don't wanna buy it back, I understand that too, so.
Well, I guess my, my question on the whole policy is, is I have one.
So do I.
You might have one, whoever. If you have one and it breaks, and I need another one, what happens?
I have to, you have to buy it.
So in other words, if, if the city were to ever buy any of these back, even at the original cost, we can hardly have John Doe buy it, and it's a used one, and said, well, this thing breaks, even though it's three, four years old? I mean, if it breaks, I gotta buy another one? I want a new one?
Sell it at a reduced price, I don't think. And I just think there's just too much to, to follow up on that, but I definitely feel like he should be able to take it with him, so, at the very least.
Well, I mean, one hundred percent it's his property. I mean, whether, whether or not you create a precedence by buying it, which, I don't know. I'm not totally against, because, but I, I guess I see what you're saying, where you're, who's gonna buy a used one if they could, I don't know.
They're gonna pay the same price.
No matter what, it's his property. I mean, that's.
It used to be a deposit. You put your deposit down, you take a meter. You bring it back, you get your deposit back.
Ah.
That's where we.
Has that been changed in February?
Yep, because that's how it worked. When I had my other house, I turned it in, got my money back, then I went and got it when I moved over there and paid my deposit back.
So did that change because they were getting new meters? Is that why that changed?
I don't know why we changed it. There was a reason. Carissa had a whole big problem with these water meters, and we changed the policy. And it used to be.
I don't think it was so much, I, I think it was people were not turning in their usage.
Well, that was one thing. They weren't turning in their numbers.
On time, maybe?
Ever.
Yeah, you got a certain.
Yeah.
Now it's twice a year.
Yeah.
Well, so we're not wasting too much of the gentleman's time, are we? I mean.
He paid for it. It's his meter.
That's how I feel.
That's how I feel.
So what, I'm gonna just, I'm trying to help him out here right now. So let's say, okay, it's yours. You can take it. Let's say tomorrow you drive down Main Street, and the guy comes out, and somebody, and then the owner says, hey, I got a meter. That, what we're, what we're saying right now, he can't sell it to John Doe down the street from him.
I don't know how those are registered to a house.
Right.
I don't, I don't know how that.
Yeah, I don't remember if there were serial numbers on them at all or not.
I know there's a number on it that's.
So is there anybody that ever just comes in and says, hey, I have a meter, so I can do this? No, they have to get it from you, right?
Mm-hmm.
So he can't just sell it, because it's registered to him.
I believe Carissa records those.
She can tell you, everybody in town has one, and check two of the serial numbers that's on it.
Yeah.
Every single one.
And then when he goes to another town, they might not allow you to use it, but.
Well, but what I can tell you, uh, sounds like you've got a boat anchor on your.
Unless you talk to the guy who bought your house.
Yeah, correct.
I mean, he, you know, sell to him for a hundred bucks, 'cause then he can register it with the city.
It's private, personal property. You can sell them anything.
It's, it's got the serial number to that house.
No, it's got the serial number.
To my account.
Sure. Then you, I guess you gotta take it with you.
All right.
So it's not good to anybody anymore?
Well, if she said she thought it stays with the house, then wouldn't it be good to the new?
It would be just like, just like opening the new account.
You could, he, he has the option of selling it to one person. That's it, it seems like.
Yeah.
If the city's not interested in it. It doesn't sound like anybody is. I wasn't entirely against.
No, that's, I understand.
It doesn't sound good for you.
No, that's all right. Like I said, I was just looking for some guidance, 'cause obviously I didn't wanna take it. I wasn't sure why. I paid for it. I wasn't, I was confused on the fact of me being able to take it from the house, so.
Where'd you move to?
Uh, I'm moving into a rental for the time being, hopefully build soon, so.
In town here?
No, outside in the country, so. But we enjoyed staying here and living here. It was a good neighborhood to live in for the last.
Hate to see you move. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
All right, we got that. Sorry you had to wait. Uh, let's jump back up to the community development. Uh, let me find the page. We had a meeting. Uh, the planning commission meeting. I was covering for the liaison. There's no, there's no update on the Main Street lots. There's, uh, the realtors had some questions, but that's about it. Update on, we talked about the annexation. Mr. Broll is considering selling that to a different developer, so he's put that on hold. And then the last item was the kind of request for conditional use permit. Where are we at with that? Was he coming, or?
No, I didn't invite him to this. I thought we decided that was a planning commission meeting thing, because once he comes.
Okay, well.
So he, he has not paid for it. He brought in his application, so it's incomplete at this time. I won't start the process to set up a hearing or anything until he comes in and completes the required paperwork.
Why don't you explain to the rest of them what he's after?
So he would like to run a small fabrication business out of this garage. He's located on Nims Avenue.
It's over by the church.
Isn't that garage like eight by eight?
Um, but he, I mean, I, you know, we, the difference between, he's, he's looking at, not as a hobby, actually as a business. But he, he didn't give.
Very part-time to start, and he is a, he is a.
Carpenter.
Carpenter, so he's looking for something to do when he's laid off from that.
Right.
Or weekends and weekends when he's old.
Does he drive?
So my question is, you get a conditional use permit for that property. Doesn't, it doesn't, well, it re-owns it, right? So it's commercial then?
No.
No?
That's why you got a conditional use.
Okay, so if his company, his business expands, um, he can't just continue to build commercially on that property, correct?
No, he's just doing it in the existing structure. The thing I, I didn't, what I was sharing with them is, well, if that's what you're gonna do, you have to show a plan with how far the other buildings are from you. 'Cause he's talking about welding and doing other things, but that doesn't, to me, doesn't really matter. If you want a conditional use, if you're gonna do it, you have to put down hours. You can't be sitting there grinding at one in the morning to your neighbors, but it doesn't sound like he did it. He didn't do it, give you any of that info, right? So my question is, did you, I, I guess, after I left that meeting, what, what are the conditions to get a conditional use? Did you find anything in there? I mean, I'm not talking of variance. Variance is totally different.
I need to send out a letter to all addresses within three hundred and fifty feet. So I have that ready. And then I have to set up a public hearing with the planning commission. And I believe, looking back at past ones, that's three weeks out to get the time to.
And it's three hundred and fifty feet, I think.
Mm-hmm.
I probably get a little more than that.
But.
Blocks around. I need to stay there.
Come on.
Say blocks about four hundred feet to me. There's about ten, there'd be about ten that would be in that three hundred and fifty feet.
I have twenty blocks.
So is it this one right here?
And, and so then you, you hold a hearing and he's gotta describe what he's gonna be doing at that property at the hearing, right?
Mm-hmm. But normally if you file for a conditional use, what is it, seventy-five dollars? Okay. It's a hundred and fifty dollars and if, let's say he withdraws or he doesn't get it, he doesn't get that a hundred and fifty back.
No, that's to cover all the.
But here's the, here's, my little brain's going is, in our city, um, I'm just asking the question is, is what's the stipulations for a conditional use? Meaning if he started making trinkets out of that garage, he probably won't even be talking to us.
It's hobby. Sounds to me like he's got a hobby he wants to pursue more than a business.
If he's talking, if he came to your guys' meeting and said a couple hours here and there, when he's laid off.
Yeah, he described it as a small business run out of there. Cause I remember back, there was a place on Main Street down towards the Village where that place is. Someone was going to do some things with that building and, uh, they were going for a conditional use. They had a, they were gonna paint and things in there. They never did anything with it. But they had to come up with, at that time, the city made them come up, okay, what times are you gonna do this? You can't be doing this on Sundays. You gotta do this from eight to five. You know what I mean? We gotta be a little careful here.
I'm sure it would fall under the same as like, commercial in this town, right? It would, you know.
But you're not in a commercial district.
Right, but I think that's the guidelines that it should fall under.
Commercial's all the other different.
Cause if you were at, let's say you were at the cabinet shop over here in the commercial district, there's nothing that says they can't have twenty-four, seven going in there. Right?
Yeah. When you're residential, it's all the other, it's kinda, you gotta have a little parameter.
And if he was just doing little trinkets, I'm gonna sell arts and crafts, you don't even look for a conditional use permit. You just, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I mean, he's talking about wanting to make small, I'm just sharing what he shared. It's on a tape, small trailers.
Yeah.
Right? Diane?
Parts for things that you can't get parts for anymore. He was special make them, yeah.
Yeah, and you don't want that going on, ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night.
Right.
Not in a residential neighborhood.
So I think probably just, being it's a small business, let them pursue the conditional use, right? Right? You with us, Sandy?
Yep. I was just looking at his house. I was looking to see where it was.
And I'm, I'm not for stepping on anybody's toes.
No.
No, no, we, no.
Careful. Let him do what he wants. You know.
Right.
Run the process. If he wants to call it a business and go after it as a business, you know.
Okay.
You can't just, you ain't doing that.
Right.
Yeah.
But I, but I still think like, yeah, in, you don't, you don't want somebody having a semi coming in and picking up parts.
That was actually brought up.
You, you know what I mean?
Cause it's not a truck route. They're not coming in there anyway. Well, the, uh, planning commission asked some of those questions.
Said he would be doing all of the driving if he now delivered.
Yeah. See, those are the things, if you got a conditional use, you have in there, so all of a sudden, you start, good for him. If his business grows, he has semi delivered, well, he's in violation of that conditional use.
Yeah.
You can pull it from him.
Fair enough.
Okay. All right, that's what we had, uh, for community development. Uh, admin?
Okay, we have, um, our tax officials report in there. They did look back at last year and, um, we are up four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars from this month from last year. Unless there's no, no significant changes otherwise.
Is the, uh, LGA in on the one last year already? I'm just making sure, you know, the half of LGA is not in either one of these, correct?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know. I just looked that up.
It doesn't look like it's in here. That would make the difference. Okay.
Okay, then, um, then I just have an amendment to the council action we did for my, um, meeting in May. I am adding a hotel cost to that. So I did get, I did get a three hundred dollar grant.
Nice.
For this, so the cost.
So she wants to spend more.
Yeah, but the cost for the course was four, forty-five, but I got a three hundred dollar grant, so it was only a hundred and forty-five. But the hotel for the week is four hundred and sixty-eight. And I just really don't want to kind of work every day.
I wouldn't want to either.
As much as that was.
So I believe, I believe when John was the clerk.
He always stayed.
We, we paid for the hotel. I think the city paid for the hotel. I'm not gonna say we, it didn't come out of my pocket. The city paid for the hotel.
I mean, even if, you know.
The gas savings alone.
Well, it's gonna cost her, it's, our reimbursed mileage, it, it's gonna be two hundred and some dollars just reimburse her mileage.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't see a problem with this.
Not a little bit.
Motion? Plus if we want her there learning, we don't want her exhausted and.
Yeah. I suppose this jacuzzi room.
I was just gonna ask.
Okay. Somebody got a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that request.
I'll second.
Uh, any, any other discussion? Now, this is amending, didn't we pass this once already?
But, but it didn't have the hotel cost.
I know, but so this is.
Amendment.
Overwriting, it's amending it. Okay, there's no other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. You had some other things on yours though, didn't you?
Okay, then, um.
Department head?
Oh, yeah. So in our department head meeting, we just, it actually turned into a, maybe I'm getting it wrong. We just basically discussed, um, the policies and, um, forms that they brought in.
Was it smooth?
Very, very smooth, but very.
Okay. What's your other part there?
Um, that'll, that actually will come when we do the resolution.
Okay. Are you done? Are you good on your report?
I'm good.
Okay. We shall move down here then, um, resolution twenty-two dash thirteen.
Oh, wait, can we do the whole business?
Oh, well, we're, okay. Go ahead. Well, can we do this?
I don't care. Any order to one.
Nice. Final, okay, what do we got? Final reading of the purchasing policy.
So when we looked at that the first time, we wanted the five thousand dollars changed to twenty-five thousand dollars. So I did that. That was the only comment I had.
For emergency?
Yes.
Emergency equipment or repair, infrastructure, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if that's the only change that reflects everything.
Well, does that affect, uh?
It just gives directions to department heads as to how their purchasing should be received.
You know, I read this, I was reading it and I was just thinking, in these kind of things, you don't wanna leave anything open to, uh, interpretation. In, uh, in, on page sixty-four, the one that's bullet pointed number two, um, about credit card usage. I'm, I just, I just kinda, I'll do, play the Josh Devil's advocate, but it says, um, they must turn in those purchases on a credit card in a timely manner. And I just, somebody could say, well, that was timely and we could say that wasn't timely. I did, I, it just popped into my head.
Define what a timely manner is, yeah. Well, I didn't have mine in for two months and that was timely to me.
There's only two people who can use a credit card?
Owen and I are the ones who we have credit card bill, credit cards, but Jared charges like a, send it.
That's accounts. That's not a credit card bill. That's their count there.
It is, but they still have to turn in those receipts.
But it's not a credit card.
Right.
This is credit card. Yeah, I thought there was only two with cards.
Yes, Owen and I are the only two that have credit cards.
I guess what's the issue? If somebody charges a credit and it doesn't get turned in the first month and it gets paid, turned in the second month, it's still gonna have to get approved.
Chris is gonna chase them now.
Well, what I'm saying is, is what's really the issue?
Well, on here it says that the city will pay each credit card balance each month.
Yeah.
Right.
So if they pay it full, but somebody didn't turn in a receipt, they're gonna go, wait a minute.
That's what I'm getting at. Isn't it gonna, checks and balances?
Well, yeah, they're gonna find out that it wasn't turned in when they go, she goes through and goes, there's one missing here.
Yeah, so I guess that would be timely, huh?
That's gonna fix itself.
Right.
For one thing.
But they're gonna have fees or whatever it says on there, but you know, they can say, well, it was timely just because, uh, you know, it was the day before the billing period ended.
Right, I, I get what you're saying. If they've gotta do their billing and they're trying to get their job done and here I'm turning it in the day before and they're saying, hey, man, I've got a lot of stuff going on right now. You could've had this in three weeks ago when you made the purchase. A timely manner should be.
Well, the laundry, you keep it in your pocket before likely are taken.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, but they're not gonna pay a credit card bill unless it's on a statement.
Yes.
They're not gonna get the statement on the thirty-first of the month.
He's back on you.
Is he?
They're coming out of him.
Down here somewhere. Um, I don't know. I don't think we need to rewrite.
See, you need to rewrite. I don't think you have to rewrite.
Yeah, I, I just saw that it, they don't have to pay any fees or penalties and that's what I was trying to say.
Okay. You need a motion on that? Final reading?
I make a motion to approve the purchasing policy.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Now we're gonna move right down there now that Diane says I can go there. Resolution twenty-two dash thirteen, approving property slash casualty insurance premiums.
Okay, so one thing under this policy is the non-owned automobile liability.
So, so I do have a question about that because I'm, I'm oblivious to what that, what precisely that means, so.
So that means if the, I believe the intention of that piece, but based on who was listed on here before, was city employees driving their personal vehicle for city.
Okay.
So it, it named Public Works and the city office and the liquor store.
And so I was, yeah, and I had that in the notes. It says, is this suggesting that the city cover these people's private vehicles while used for the city? Because we have vehicles. I don't think that the city employees should be using their private vehicles for the city.
Normally they don't, but there are occasions that it happens. So I, more than likely, when I go for a week to St. Cloud, I'm gonna take my personal vehicle because I have family in St. Cloud and I'm not gonna run around in St. Cloud in a city vehicle. I have personal things I would like to do outside of St. Cloud.
But then you'd be on your time. Driving up there would be city time. Driving back would be city time, but in between, when you're not at a meeting or anything and you're chasing, that's your time.
But that's why she's saying she would have her own vehicle.
I know, but that's what she's saying.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You know, it, where the city should cover her vehicle on the way up and on the way, but when we're reimbursing you for your mileage, you know, that's where it would fall in, but your runaround would be your own time.
Yeah.
And that's where that would fall under that.
Okay, so how was this, you changed the names. How was this before?
Well, you can see who was out there.
No, no, I'm not, I don't care about people.
So what has changed for this year was we had this discussion a couple of months ago raised by the fire department questioning who was covered when they take their personal vehicles. So this policy was changed this section to cover fire department and ambulance personnel, I think.
Who changed it?
Dean and I talked about it, so that's what I'm asking. Is that a change that we, we want? Or do you not want? Because Dale is listed on here because he's Public Works.
But I mean, obviously for Public Works, he's not using his own vehicle.
Right.
Right, right, majority of, yeah.
I mean, he's, there's.
Well, Dale should be on there too because he's fire chief.
But we, that's what we talked about, um, that they were saying, cause I remember that meeting where they talked about the fire department and the ambulance shouldn't be showing up to a scene in their own personal vehicles.
In their bylaws, as they, remember, they brought it up. Dale and him says they have to come here and go.
But does the chief?
Well, yeah.
I, I don't think they differentiate between the two.
I don't know. I don't know.
But my question, I'm gonna go back to, to this. Are you saying the way it was before with these names, was the, was the vehicle, was the personal vehicle covered?
Yeah.
Was the bodily injured covered, injury covered?
It's all of the city.
That's the way it was before?
Yeah.
But why would you?
So I guess my question is, are, do we really want to extend this further or? Or is it, is it not including fire department and ambulance and that has to be stated? Whether they're listed on here or not.
Yeah, the other thing is.
But they're volunteers.
Yeah. Another thing I was gonna say is, I mean, is, is, is the city gonna have to start doing inspections on their vehicle to make sure they should even be taking them and using them? And, and be covered under the city's insurance policy while they're in their own, I mean, what if there's something defective with their vehicle? We would check that out on the city stuff, but on people's private vehicles? When they're out driving, let's say somebody has a tie rod that goes bad and we didn't know, but and they're driving their own vehicle.
Our bald tires.
It was an accident. They smoked somebody on the road. I mean, now is the city gonna have to start doing inspections on their vehicles and making sure that they should be using them on city time? It, it just seems like there's a lot of.
But that's the way it was before.
Right, well, I mean, is that a question that gotta ask me for?
I didn't, I, are you absolutely sure that when someone reimburses mileage, that their, that their own insurance doesn't cover it? I'd be interested in knowing that.
Oh.
My, and there again, my major concern is, is we don't know what operating condition those vehicles are in when they're using them on city time. I don't know.
Well, I, I can see, I can see it not being expanded out to the volunteer end of it, like the firemen and the ambulance. But I still question this one. But you're saying that our insurance company said this is the way it's always been for this list of people?
Look, yeah, if you look at the names on there, I'm pretty sure they've been under.
Why do you know if any of this stuff on top has changed?
Most of them.
Yeah, so you, up until.
Looks like it was revised.
Until I changed this thing.
Well, it looks like it's been.
We were covering a lot.
November of oh-three.
I still think that's a question I don't, that should be posed to either insurance or to the attorney on whether or not we should be covering them if we don't know what condition their vehicles are in when they're using them on city time.
somebody's in hutch and picks up a shop vac and bringing it back and has an accident, well, who gave them permission? I mean, it could, this just seems really gray.
I don't know if that's just the way the city's rights is.
Well, I guess that, I guess I think as a council, is this, could you find out, is this what others, all other cities doing, if everybody does it?
Nope.
So, what can they say? When he stopped in, he's like, you have one. We have, we specifically talked about this two months ago.
Yeah, we said they had a drive to the, the fire department and the ambulance.
Yeah, we have this coverage.
Well, this is the first time I've seen this.
Yeah, but again, look at the names, and they've been on there for twenty-five years. I can add it.
Has this been revised? I mean, look at this.
Eleven-three.
Eleven-three, ninety-six to eleven-three.
Yeah, I don't have the current policy.
I think somebody needs to take a peek at this.
So, are you seeing?
I have, I have Dean looking into this again.
So, who's, I don't know who Dean is.
Yeah.
Our insurance company.
Okay.
Wouldn't it be, you know, on those times that, where, where somebody's billing for mileage, those, those make sense, but for somebody to just run the hutch, did they bill for mileage when they're doing that, picking up the shop vac?
Probably.
I suppose.
Most time, they're in a city vehicle.
Yeah.
Yes.
Especially if it's Public Works.
Well, I guess my question is, I'd like to know what other cities do.
Very few have this, even, even know this was up there before they showed it to us.
Might be a reading for that.
Two or three other cities that have it.
Then I say we.
Get rid of it.
We don't have it. I bet you, in, in the nineteen years this is here, it's probably never been used.
Until now.
Well, but not as a Public Works.
No.
But his name is on there.
His name is on there, so he's covered.
Well, we have to go forward.
Right.
So, we should.
What do we gotta do to make, we gotta make a motion to get rid of this policy?
Yeah, yeah.
As of effective.
Tonight.
So, wording this properly, I make a motion to dissolution, dissolution, the scheduled non-owned automobile liability policy.
Sound right?
What is as of?
As of, what, it's the eighteenth today?
Right.
As of four eighteen twenty-two?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Excuse me. Let's keep moving here, we only got a few to go. Next one's resolution twenty-two dash fifteen.
Okay, but that wasn't, I mean, it was approving of paying, that resolution is approving paying, but insurance not.
Well, this is just the premium solution.
It was.
This was this. Disorganized. Okay, we got, we'll go back to pay and the premium. How did we get off onto that?
Twenty-two thirteen, right, resolution?
So, what do you got on that?
Well, so, the premiums for this year are twenty-eight thousand forty-two, which will drop, so, when we take out this section of it, and we present it.
Thirty.
Okay.
So, with this section coming out, do we, because we don't have a specific number now.
Right.
Do we still move forward with the resolution tonight?
I don't think we should.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Now, we'll go to twenty-two dash fifteen, authorizing transfers for infrastructure improvement project.
Again, this transfer that.
Oh, for that twenty-nine sixty-two, that we approved at the last meeting.
So, and then my, my question is, and I think you've had this question before, I think we've all had this question, how many times have we gotta move this number to the not to exceed amount?
Every time we do, every time you do that question.
Right, I guess it's more of a question out of annoyance than anything. I guess it is what it is at this point.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash fifteen.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Next one is the request for, application for the one-day gambling license for the Silverlake Pools and Parks for Polucheski.
I make a motion to approve the one-day gambling license for Silverlake Pools and Parks organization for Polucheski Days Raffle August seventh.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Next one is the city council vacancy applications.
Oh, yes.
And those were separate, right?
Yes.
If I can get back, I'm gonna hope I don't lose this thing.
I'll figure out how to get there. Talk to yourself.
I have them if you need them.
So, we have two.
We don't have to have an election?
No, this, this carries it till the election time.
This'll carry it to the election.
And then that, then that position will be open for two years.
Okay.
So, has anyone, have you guys looked at them?
Yep, I will, I will open up the.
Discussion?
The discussion with it, just because, I look at these and I, and I, I see two great things, I see, um, somebody, I guess, that appears to be younger than me, that is wanting to get involved, and I think that, that's, I think that's wonderful, I think that's great, I love to see it. And I also see, on the other hand, somebody with just a ton of experience, somebody who, if you don't even look at the other application, which I did, I looked at them both thoroughly, but if you don't even look at the other one, I look at somebody who has just so much to bring to the table, and, and dedication that I feel is undeniable to this town, I just think that, I think Roxy is, is something, we got a lot of big decisions to make, she's got a ton of experience, ton of dedication, brings a lot to the table, that's, that's the way I'm heading. I, I, and I would head that direction, just based on, not even just the extensive resume, but years of knowing how she works in this town, and if there was a pile of them next to her, it'd be hard to not, I think it would, I would even go so far as to say foolish to not, but that's my opinion, so.
I guess my opinion kinda goes the same as yours, but I, I really liked, I'm torn, because I know what one can bring to the table, but I'm also really intrigued by someone that came to the meeting, and they're young, and, you know, maybe bring on a, maybe bring a fresh deal to us people, someone that's really interested in it, yeah, it's a tough one.
And, and there again, and I agree, and, and having interest, and having interest is great, I think having experience, especially when you're, when you're running in a town, and it, because that's literally what we're doing, we're, the town is basically running a business, but it's running a business of your friends and family, and having that experience is just something that, and she has just a ton of it, and it's something that you can rely on, something you can fall back on, that's, people have been through battles, and I just, I, yeah, I, hey, I started a youth organization in this town, don't get me wrong, I fully understand, trying to get young people involved is a great thing, but it's just really hard to turn away from the amount of experience you have with.
So, this, this is gonna be for seven months?
Yep.
Until the election?
Yep.
And they can make their decision? I don't know, I guess I'm, personally, I'm leaning, I like the young person wanting to get involved, that came to the meetings and was listening in, that's just my opinion, what do you guys think?
I'm kinda, I'm kinda leaning with you right now, I don't know either of these people, so that is helpful for me.
It actually is helpful, yeah.
So, as far as the one that, that I'm clearly leaning towards, she also works for the city, she's also, is very, very active in, in organizations in town, as far as dedicating her time to making sure this town, helping this town grow, helping this town and its organizations put into this town, she also works with.
It's all in her resume.
Yeah, it's, it's all, it's, it's extensive, trust me, but just the amount of experience, she was mayor here for a while too, so she has council experience, yeah, just.
What do you think, Chris?
I, I'm leaning towards Roxy, she's my favorite right now, with her experience and.
I know where this is going already.
With what we're dealing with, with the city, with the infrastructure, you know, she's made those tough decisions, and, yeah, she's been active in this community forever. And, and I know where you're coming from, Bruce, I, I see that, but if, I'm just, I'm leaning on this other side, if I had to make a decision tonight.
Well, we do.
I just told you mine then.
Well, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor then, if there's any, I'm gonna make a motion to accept Roxy Yurk as, for the open council seat.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Aye.
Not? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
So, now what do we do, flip a quarter?
Well, you wanna make a motion for the other one, see where that goes?
Okay, so, I, I'll make a motion for us to appoint Joanna Jacobs for the open seat.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Aye.
Not? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
So, now what do we do, flip a quarter?
Well, you wanna make a motion for the other one, see where that goes?
Okay, so, I, I'll make a motion for us to appoint Joanna Jacobs for the open seat.
Is there a second? I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion failed. Well, I, I gotta break the tie.
No, he breaks the tie.
Well, I'd be, here's why I'm torn, 'cause if somebody's very, somebody's very experienced, do a good job, I make a motion for a person, I mean, put yourself in my position now, I have to do this, and it's not pleasant, I made a motion for a person, now I'm, now I'm, I'm gonna go against my own motion.
But, Bruce, when you, when you came mayor here, you said you would do.
Right, I know.
What the, what our little group down here to make it work, either one of them, and you're not going against what you did, you're just doing what you think should be done now at this juncture.
I know, that's, that's something, goes with, goes with the job. No, I'm, no, I'm just saying, this is, that's.
Yep. And you'll never know if it's right or wrong.
No, and I just don't want anybody taking it the wrong way.
Right, being offended.
Right.
And that's what we talked about.
Right.
You, you gotta do what you gotta do.
It is what it is.
And we'll make it work.
Right. So, I guess I'm going to break the tie and recommend we appoint Joanna Jacobs to fill the, fill the council position until the next election. I guess, that's it?
That's it.
And in order for this to get filled, if for some reason, when you contact her, she turns it down, uh, she won't, she's very interested, okay.
She would've been here tonight if she fought that with it.
I think the, the neat thing is, is it's seven months, it gives her some.
Right.
A taste of it, and then, then it's started over.
Well, I'm sure I'm the jerk now, but, okay.
As long as it's you.
Yeah, by the time it's at the head of the table.
What do we got for open discussion? Go ahead.
All right, just pondered this, and I pondered this with, it's been thrown around before, the building next to the fire hall, which is city property, our water tower and our well is for sale, and I think we should consider purchasing that for future of this town.
Jarabek sold it?
Nope, the, the old bar.
Next to the parking lot?
Oh, all that property right there, future fire hall, future water plant, future, anything for our city, you know, there isn't much land in this town, and I think, over the years, that should've been addressed sooner. Some of this stuff we need, I think, to, is think ten years down the road, fifteen years down the road, because there isn't a plan for that, and I think that's kinda where our infrastructure plan has kinda stabbed us and hurt us, and I think we should seriously consider it. It was sold once, and the sale fell through, and I don't know where it's sitting right now, and I think we should seriously, as a council, consider that property.
There's a lot that goes into that, especially.
I know that.
Because it's an old, old building, and some of them can end up with the materials, and I'm not necessarily your materials, but they can end up with things in them that, that we don't wanna get into either, so it's one of those things where you.
But it's, like the old farmer said. If that farm comes up for sale, it might only be for sale once in a lifetime, if it's connected to your property, you might never get the chance to buy that again.
I guess the only thing I'm concerned about, or I have no idea, is, I've never seen it, could you actually build a water tower right next to the other one?
I don't know, I don't know, but fire hall expansion, the fire hall, I guarantee you, the future's gonna need expansion, our well is right there, our city well is right there. I mean, it's something to ponder, something to kick around, it's gonna sell, it's gonna sell.
So, what is it on the market for right now?
One twenty-nine, and I think she wants to sell it. I mean, it, right now, it, it pays for, it pays for itself as of right now, with the rents.
Could be, could be, you know, one-ten, one-fifteen to buy it, and two-hundred to tear it down.
Yes, but we were talking to, like, the, the other empty one down the street, you know, we were kicking it around, maybe we would need that well, this one touches our property already.
I think the only key to that one is the other one's empty.
I know, I know, but it's something to consider before the next meeting, maybe if, if we do a little investigation, a little kicking around, just something to put in your brain.
I guess the only part that I don't like as a city, to get into rental stuff.
I understand that.
'Cause I mean, if, if there was something that, if we had plans for it, and you said, okay, we're gonna purchase that building, we're gonna level it, and if we're not gonna level it, I have, 'cause I mean, by the time we need a water tower, I mean, I'm just speaking for the group here, and I think as, you know, that could be ten years.
Yep, I know, but it was a thought that kicked into my head.
You know, you know, I don't know, you know, I don't, I hate to take things off the tax roll.
I do too. It's just that it's connected to our property and it's for sale, and we could possibly need, I mean, we bought the other one too, because we're gonna need, we're gonna need that.
I mean, I'm just looking at it, I'm just sharing, I liked your, all of a sudden, someone would look at that and say, well, gee, the city owns three-quarters of Main Street, we got those lots over there, and now we're gonna have that.
If that lot's closer.
Well, we can think about it, I'm glad you brought it up, we can bring it up on the, put it on the agenda for the next one.
And, and, and I don't want the city to get into business, another thing that kicked around is them lots we own, what if we put an office front on it, had a new city hall and storage units behind it that we own, wouldn't it not pay for itself? We got stuck with them lots, we own them lots, they're sitting there empty, and I know that, that's just another thought that turned in this dirty dusty cobweb up here on top of my shoulders, that, hey, something to ponder.
But there again, you're talking about putting a front on, putting a city hall there, and then storage in the back, leasing, renting it out, again, we're in the rental business.
I know that, but you're in the rental business of paying for your new building, for your new city hall, without, you know what I mean? It, it's generating itself to pay for itself, you're not asking the taxpayers, hey, I'm gonna build a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar building, you're paying for all of it, no, that's got a check coming to us every month, every one of them is a check, and that's something just to kick around, I don't know, I, I mean, I, I don't like paying taxes in this town, just like the next guy don't, but I don't wanna move from this town either, I'm just thinking of ways to make things, so we can improve ourself, improve our infrastructure, and not break everybody's wallet. And I'm not saying, let's do it, but think about it, if there was a way, maybe, maybe I'm just crazy too.
I lean, I lean, for me, for me and my thought process, I lean more towards, if there, if there were to be the idea of any more purchase, that just because I know what the expenses can end up being with a building on the property, one that's empty and specifically for infrastructure needs, if it's going to be down here, and I think if, if anywhere else you're thinking of purchasing, I'm thinking. else you're thinking of purchasing, I'm thinking, you're thinking on the edges of town and stuff, where there can be expansion, where the city can lure in businesses, like, you know, and I, and I always go to manufacturing, but anything of that nature, that's what I think about, the buildings always make me nervous.
I know, they can be spooky, them old ones, and that, but it was just, I had to get it off and kick it out there and get it in the, in the world. And I'll make a few calls, just to appease my curiosity.
Okay. Anything else for open discussion?
Uh, just one quick one, so that, that sign, it sounds like it's still moving along slowly, they're, it sounds like waiting on some engineering and some...
Yeah, he didn't come to the planning commission.
Yeah, yep.
He did stop in today and asked if it was on the agenda for today, next week, he said it was.
Right.
But he wasn't, he said that's gonna depend on how ready he is.
Yeah, he's, I'm sorry, yeah, he's moving, he's moving forward with it, but a question came up, and we're at a meeting, and a question came up, and they said, is the city going to allow paid advertising on there? And I said, I didn't know if that was really an option, depending on what it was, or if it was something that they were looking into, because, let's say you do, now pretty soon, if you do have an event, or the city wants to announce something, and you, if you allow this person to advertise, can you even turn this person down? Pretty soon, maybe you've got forty advertisers on there, likely not in a small town, but when do you, you know, how often do you even see a message on there, or the cities notice that they're trying to get out about hydrant flushing or something? So it is something that townspeople are asking, is there going to be paid advertisement on there, is it, is it, and, and also, one thought that he had was, I think he was talking to a distributor, who happens to be an alcohol distributor, and they said that, you know, potentially there's an option, they could kick money towards it if their name was on the sign, and I said, well, I don't know, with it being a city thing, if that's something that's even allowed. So these questions are starting to come out about that sign, and a lot of it has to do with advertising and...
What does Hutch do on there, one, the one right by the stoplight there, by the...
Right, that's just what I was thinking.
That is not paid advertising, that is just activities that...
But it is city-owned, right?
Yeah.
But they do, I mean, they say the, what's happening at the expo, or what's happening, there's a dog show, or...
It's a chamber.
Chamber?
They're...
Chamber.
So whether or not there could be, you know, a sponsor on it, you know, or there could be paid advertising, and where do you draw the line, and who can advertise and who can't, and, so, yeah, these are just questions that are coming up, and what people are asking, so, I mean, is it, is it a possibility that a liquor company could have their name on a city sign if they were willing to?
Well, I mean, I guess if someone was looking down that road, I'm just being really frank, if that was something he wanted to do, why wouldn't someone, I know it's not that easy, it's easier said, why doesn't he put that up on some private property and sell the, sell the advertising rights?
And we...
I mean, that's like, if you look at that one in, in St. Bonnie, if any of you go through that big one there, that, that's on private property, and that's all, sure they make, well, we ran it for nine days and was two-hundred and sixty-five bucks.
Yep.
For, I mean, it was on there for like, ten seconds.
And, and the, the other idea that somebody had, if it wasn't something where a city would be allowed to do that, but they would be willing to kick in money, would it be beneficial for the bar to run the sign, since they already, they already do advertising in the bar? But I, so there's a lot, there's a lot of questions that are coming up about advertising and sponsoring and things of that nature, so, but it's creeping along.
Okay.
I just have one thing, and that, I just, maybe it's another thing that I didn't realize that we didn't miss, but were we gonna talk about that one apartment thing? Or was that...
Oh, you mean the...
The people living where they were supposed to be living?
This morning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, I didn't see my...
Um, this morning.
Is it the same one that I knew about?
It's the, it's the, it's the police report, the sheriff's report, from when he went over to that, to return that wallet?
Yeah.
Oh, and he didn't see a bed, but he seen trinkets.
No, he didn't see trinkets, he saw basically a living room.
Fully furnished, it said.
Right, but what...
But he, in his reports, that highly recommended that you get these things out of the...
He recommended to those people.
Sort of like, as they were living in there, and they moved the stuff out.
Yes.
Well, we knew that.
Right.
Well, we suspected that.
Right, but what's...
But we wanted to hear what the sheriff said.
Right, so then, did you, you tell them what the agreement was that he has now?
I did not, I didn't ask that.
Okay, go ahead and share that with them, that'll answer her question.
Okay, I don't have it, so I'm gonna wait it.
Okay.
So we have an agreement with him that...
With, with the owner?
Owner.
Mike.
That the public...
Rental, deal, rental.
Yeah, and law enforcement can enter that building to check out...
Got it, yeah, we came up with that at the last meeting, didn't we?
What he agreed to?
He, he's, oh, okay, all right, good.
I had it, I had it rewritten, like, one article, so he entered it going on, and so he, he did sign it, I do have a key, I don't know if that key opens, or the doors have to wait.
But the, but the other part is, is he was getting, he had the permit for the plumbing.
He does have the permit.
Once that permit's done and finalized, then Dale should go in, I'm just speaking out loud, and say, yes, he meets all safety things, we do, for that, we do not have rights to that unit any longer.
Right, it's only for the unoccupied, uninhabitable.
Right.
Can't just walk in.
You know, their kitty corner?
Yep.
One up and one down, the one we're talking about is up on that upwards.
I haven't seen lights up there...
Not since I...
Since he got caught, or since they got caught.
Hmm.
One night, but I go by there usually about ten o'clock every day.
Right, so anyway, that's the case, so, but I just would like you to make sure that, when he gets it, before it's habitable, Dale does have to do his inspection.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, that answers your question.
Solo means inspect.
Well, but he does that, but it's not passing the other stuff.
Right, detectors, COs, all that.
Right.
Yeah, we'll have to give him a user, a lock, and see for five minutes.
Right.
For seven.
Yeah.
There's eight units in there.
Yeah.
Oh.
And there's two that aren't...
Two that are uninhabitable.
Okay.
So then the other thing is, is that what you had? So May fourteenth is the citywide cleanup, I'll take a shift.
[laughing].
It's my anniversary and I'm taking a shift.
This'll be the first time I won't be here, though, so I've taken the last three, but I won't be here this year.
I don't even know what this entails.
You can stand there and collect money and tell them to, don't bring your tires.
Unless you have OCD like me, then you climb in there and organize all the stuff.
It was organized, dude.
I, this year I can't be there, sorry, guys, this is like...
What does it entail?
It's eight till noon, right?
Dr. Coney's shift.
I'll do it, it's covered.
Well...
It's the last day to garage sale.
What day is it?
That's May fourteenth.
What, that's opening fishing.
Yeah, I know, that's what I figured.
I'll be on a fishing trip up north, so...
So I guess the last thing I had for open discussion is, I've been in contact with the trail, and actually, it's starting today, the cleanup, did anyone stop in and get anything yet?
No.
Okay, and they can tomorrow, so anyway, it's a week long cleanup, and I'm going out Saturday with a few people, if anyone would want to help, I'm gonna get permission.
Have you called me to tell me what section you want?
No, I talked to Cook.
Oh, really? Because I pulled that up today and there's no names on it.
Right, does it have any names on any section?
Nope.
Right.
Where are you talking about?
Well, it's, it goes all the way from Hutch to Winston.
Oh, the, the, on the other side of Seven?
So you can put me, put us down for, from edge of Silver Lake to Sherman Station.
Make sure I got my garage cleaned out and dumped on that trail.
It'll be coming right back on your yard, so...
I will be at a pool tournament Saturday, I can't help you there either.
Right.
We get to have fun.
Is any time this week?
Right, but I'm organizing a group to do it, because I'm gonna talk to, I shouldn't say it, but I'm gonna talk to Christie Rice again, to see if I can put my side-by-side on, we'll just drive down, pick this stuff up and bag it up.
Haven't been on the trail, does it get pretty messy, I suppose, after winds and stuff all winter?
Yeah, it's not bad, I mean, it's, it should be cleaned up, so anybody's interested, I think we'll probably do it at nine o'clock.
On what day?
Saturday, yeah, put us down on that stretch. Okay, and we'll see what happens, the bonding bill, I see they're pushing it right till the end.
Yep.
Yeah, see if anything happens with it. So, anything, anybody have anything else? Do you have anything else, Dan?
One thing for you, I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, meeting adjourned.
Yahoo.